Okay, we're at the budget meeting this morning and I'm going to turn this over to the county manager in a minute. And IT just asked us to remember to push that little button if you want to talk, right there on the front. Okay. County manager.
Commissioner. Good afternoon. Commissioners, today we'll be presenting the first of two budget workshops, the second being scheduled for April 15th. You'll see today that staff has been continuing its focus on board priorities and objectives that this commission has established over the last several years, formally or during board discussions, as critically important for the community, for Brevard, for our organization moving forward. And so you all know that one of the important areas that we've been focused on over the last several years is infrastructure, so you're going to hear more about that today, particularly in the area of roads in four areas, maintenance, reconstruction, bridge, and capacity. In dealing with roads and in dealing with public works, I want to also say that the Citizens Budget Review Committee has been active with us in the last two years especially in providing input and dialogue with staff. And we've incorporated several recommendations that they've made over time into the presentations you're going to hear today. You'll note that we have a focus on five-year planning moving forward. That type of strategic thinking, that approach to this workshop and the presentations that you're going to hear was developed, at least in part, from input that we received and support we received from members of the Citizens Budget Review Committee. So where we've, you know, what we've done organizationally, where we are today and where we're going, where we think the board wants us to go, is what you're going to hear in each of the various presentations that we're bringing forward. Public Works presentation was, that you're going to hear today, was given to the Citizens Budget Review Committee, and we valued their input and what they provided as input, and we tweaked that presentation, and it really became the model for the other presentations that you're going to see. So you're going to hear from Public Works first, you're going to hear from Mark Bernath, our Public Works Director, who's going to give you his presentation. And then right after that, we're going to spend just a little bit of time, I've asked Jerry Visco to be ready, and he'll be able to present on the issue of the $15 minimum wage that has gone through, how that's going to impact us organizationally, specifically from a five-year perspective, how it impacts us and how it will impact the organization from a fiscal perspective. So that'll be very brief, but we wanted to give you that. When we're done with that, we're going to get to another area that this board has focused on in the last two years and said that's critically important, and that's addressing public safety, specifically fire rescue. And you'll see that staff has been planning and is going to be addressing the issue of attrition, overtime, and salaries, specifically in the area which is critical to move things forward of where we are with the fire assessment. And we actually went beyond a five-year approach in this, it's a seven-year approach, and we're looking at it for over a seven-year period, and we're going to give the board a variety of options to give us direction to move forward. We'll need that direction so that we can bring back a fire assessments, which is really going to be the catalyst for us to be able to do the things that we're going to be talking about today. And we have to get that information from you in that direction because we will have to put out a public notice, we'll have to come back for the board to get the assessment rates so that we can put it in place for October, which gives us the opportunity to move things forward. Now, I'll tell you, when we comment that, there's one other aspect I do want to mention, and that is, you know, the firefighters, to their credit, last year, you'll recall that the board was ready to address the fire assessment in a minor way, that minor way being to accelerate the increases that had been discounted over time. And we were ready to do that, and we were ready to bring it back to you in the March timeframe. But as we all know, March, you know, we got hit with COVID, everything was very uncertain at that time. So to their credit, they waited, and we did not bring that forward for the community. So we still have part of what we could have gotten there, and we've incorporated that into what you're going to hear today in terms of where we need to really address those three important issues of attrition, overtime, and salaries. And our presentation will be by, Colonel Wallace will be giving that presentation for you on behalf of public safety. Utilities, then, is another area that we, the board has indicated is critically important moving forward from a variety of reasons. One, from what we dealt with in 2017 with Hurricane Irma and the discharges that occurred, and, you know, how do we address those and eliminate the potential, or at least reduce the potential, if not eliminate it, because you can never guarantee that it's always going to be eliminated, discharges, breaks in the system, et cetera. So, but we're going to come forward today, and our utilities director, Eddie Fontenan, will be addressing in the same kind of format that I've discussed, what they intend to do over time, where we are today, and what we'll have to do to the utilities rates to be able to protect the Indian River Lagoon as best as we can, to address infrastructure needs, both in terms of capacity moving forward, but also to address a system that, you know, has significant maintenance needs, and how he plans to address that over the next seven-year period, and then see if that's the direction that the board wants us to go. So we're going to be addressing all those issues, and we're going to be looking to the board for input and direction on what's the right path that the board wants us to move forward in these critically important areas. We believe that, we're hoping we'll get the board's confidence that we've been good stewards of the resources that we have up to this point in those different areas, and we will be very attentive to the comments that the board makes today in how we move things forward in preparing for the budget and addressing the areas in these kind of areas. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Jill Hayes, who is going to give you a very, very brief overview of the budget generally, and then we're going to get into those areas that I brought to the board's attention. How brief is that, Frank? Just kidding.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As Frank mentioned, I'm going to provide a very brief overview of the fiscal year 2020-2021 adopted budget. And then we're going to review where we are in terms of the Consumer Price Index, which, as you know, is tied to several of our revenue sources, and then we'll move right into the strategic priorities that Frank outlined in his introduction. So the fiscal year 2020-2021 adopted budget is just under $1.5 billion, and Florida statutes require that the budget must be balanced, including all new revenues received and balances brought forward from prior years. So as you can see from this slide, in the blue section, approximately 44% of our budget are balances being brought forward. So this isn't new money, but government funds can be carried forward for a variety of reasons, including revenues received in prior years, projects not yet complete, and funding set aside in reserves. The operating revenue in green, this represents the new dollars being brought into the government. This includes property taxes, permits, fees, special assessments, charges for services, and we're going to go over that in a little more detail on the next slide. Transfers, which is in the orange section, that represents really funding being allocated from one fund to another fund to support certain programs and services, and then the financing is primarily a utility services state revolving loan. So again, this $771 million represents the operating revenue of our budget, so that's about 52%, and that, again, is the new money coming in. And because in governmental accounting, revenues are received for specific purposes, they have to be categorized into individual funds and fund groups. So the general funds, which you see in green, those represent the funds that can be used for any governmental purpose, and is really where you have the most discretion, and we'll focus on those a little in the next slide. The special revenue funds in pink account for revenue sources that are restricted for specific purposes. So the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Trust Fund, gas taxes, tourism development taxes, those are all considered special revenue funds. Enterprise funds in blue account for those goods and services that operate like a business, so utility services, solid waste, where they're receiving charges for services. And then you have capital improvement and debt service funds. Now, most of our capital projects are funded by special revenue funds and enterprise funds, so I would like to point that out. So again, we wanted to highlight the sources and uses of the general fund, which is approximately $253 million of the total $1.5 billion budget, and again, this is where you have the most discretion. So on the left side of this chart, you'll see the revenue sources. And as you'll remember, this year, as we developed the fiscal year 2021 budget, we did reduce some of the estimates for the local half-cent sales tax and the state shared revenue based on the COVID impacts. Now, those impacts were less severe in Brevard County than we had initially projected, so as we move into the next fiscal year, we'll be reassessing those as we develop the budget. The right side of this chart represents how those general fund dollars are appropriated, and you'll see that approximately 69% of the general revenue funds go to support charter offices, court operations, mandates, and other obligations. About 16% of the general funds are allocated to public safety and infrastructure, which have customarily been identified as core services. And then that leaves about 15% to fund other general fund programs, such as parks and recreation, information technology, general government, and other support services. As you're aware, Section 2.9.3.1 of the Brevard County Charter limits growth in ad valorem tax revenues to the lesser of 3% or the change in CPI. So this chart illustrates where we've been since 2011 in terms of change in CPI. So this year, as we develop the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, we're looking at a change in CPI of 1.234%. And so when you look at the general countywide ad valorem revenue, that 1.234% is equal to just under $2 million in new general fund revenue coming in for existing properties. Now, that doesn't include new construction, however, we won't have those preliminary numbers from the property empriser's office until about June. However, as property values rise, we can anticipate that we'll have a lower general fund millage rate due to the charter cap, so that will be a lower millage rate to apply to all the properties, including the new construction. And so with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to our Public Works Director, Mark Bernath.
Well, good afternoon, Board. Mark Bernath, Public Works Director. I'm joined today, I'm joined today by my Assistant Director of Road and Bridge Manager, Susan Jackson, also have Traffic Operations Manager, Corina Gumm, and our Public Works Safety Man, Public Works Support Manager, Tammy Thomas Woods. So these are the topics that I'm going to discuss today. Subject to your questions, please note just ahead of time that there's a bunch of these slides that I'm really going to try to move quickly through. I'll stop, of course, if you have any questions, but I want to get to the heart of the brief, which are a couple key slides later on. So just a quick overview, our mission is to create and maintain transportation and facilities infrastructure. At this point, we have 750-plus active projects and 1,224 miles of road. Just a quick look, it's important to look backwards and forwards so you know where you've been, so you can determine where you're going. Back in 2017, this board committed to long-term funding to address pavement concerns. In 2020, we remained focused on both maintenance and backlog of that, and the one challenge that we really had not faced was capacity, which we'll get into. In 2021, the backlog continues to decrease. We're implementing a new bridge program, which I'll share with you. We'll discuss some of our capacity mitigation plans, and we will prepare a road preservation pilot for '22. So this is a brief overview of our 2021 major transportation funding sources. The total Public Works budget for FY 2021 is actually $139 million. This slide does not delve into engineering survey or facilities, it's specifically focused on our transportation component, and as the slide shows, $123.8 million. As you can see, there's a laundry list there of different grants, general funds, franchise fees, and balance forward, which helps us be able to do the projects that we are undertaking. The predominant fund, though, is transportation revenue from gas taxes. That revenue, as I'm sure you're aware, fluctuates and depends highly on increased fuel efficiency, autonomous vehicle technology, and so we've begun to see a trend where that might not be a good long-term strategy to base future funding for transportation. So we're going to start with an overview. This is our paved road network statistics. This slide shows percent by county, maintain roads in each district, and both in the graphical representation as well as the table. This is our report card, effectively. It's based on an independent assessment, and it shows that we've made progress and successful investment since 2011. We have 1,129 paved centerline miles of road, and on average, our PCI, or our Pavement Condition Index, now is at 80 for the county, Vice 63, back in 2011, and that was based on an independent pavement condition assessment that we had performed over the past year. The next slide is just keeping on our theme of where we are today. So these are some transportation infrastructure accomplishments that we completed over the past year. Despite significant vacancies and resource constraints, we've delivered on some big wins over the past year. However, in the interest of time, I'm not going to necessarily dive into this deeper unless there are specific questions, as some of these topics I'll highlight later throughout the brief. Again, on the where we are today theme, road resurfacing and reconstruction goals, we've met or exceeded goals the last three years, as the chart shows, the number of miles, as well as our goals for this current year. You'll see later in the presentation, the investment is paying off, and dollars towards this program are being well-spent. As of today, we are at 35% complete, or 26 miles for FY 21 road surfacing program, and we are complete with 10% of our road reconstruction program and tracking to meet or exceed goals. Also of note is that, as originally laid out in our plan, we are still tracking to meet the per-district goals that were set out by the board several years ago. So this is, this slide shows three road maintenance categories. We have preventative rehabilitation, major rehab and reconstruction, and you'll see boxes on the top of the different bar charts. This shows continued progress towards driving down our backlog. Our backlog is from the roads that are fair or yellow to failed in gray, and as you can see on the chart above, we have significantly decreased that. Our backlog now stands at 267 miles, and we'll continue to drive down that number throughout this year and in the following years. It's important to note that each year, road conditions continue to deteriorate, and we have seen, as an average, on local roads, about two PCI points per year. So over the next five years, if we did nothing to continue the maintenance efforts that this board has supported, we would see, as an example, our yellow right now has 172 miles in it, an additional 98 of those would topple into poor or pink category, again, if we did nothing. However, as we'll show you in a future slide, we have been working to tackle our backlog, mitigate this topple, and as well, we are going to introduce the concept of preservation to be able to extend what is currently shown in blue in satisfactory categories. The cost on this is also important to highlight. At its lowest amount, if we did preservation, we would see $12,000 per mile to preserve roads. However, when we let roads fall into disrepair and get into the failed category, it costs us $640,000 a mile for full reconstruction. So it's important that we take this next step to look at preservation as a pilot and make sure it works for us, but the important point there is that we start moving towards that because it's a lot cheaper. The last four years, we focused on a worst-first approach to keep at-risk roads from falling into reconstruction, and with the board's support, we funded that and we tackled the deferred backlog. That was needed at the time because of the amount of backlog we had, but it's a very costly way to pursue managing our road network. So now that the backlog is more So now that the backlog is more manageable, again, we'll talk about pavement preservation going forward. Switching to Brevard County Bridges, again, under the theme of where we are today. Bridges were recognized in last year's budget submission needing focus and attention, similar to roads several years prior. And we currently have forty-seven vehicular and pedestrian bridges, including one swing bridge. Forty of them are inspected by FDOT every two years. Roughly half of them are done every year as far as an inspection, and then we get reports. This year, we completed, this past year, we completed a bridge condition assessment where we looked at the seven bridges that we are required to inspect within the county, and we were able to determine the need for immediate and long-term repairs or replacement. This also helped us create a first cut at budgeting and prioritizing, as you'll see in the next slide and later in the brief under our five-year plan. Currently, we have one new bridge under construction, which is the Pineda Causeway. It's substantially complete with just a few minor items being work, transition, striping, and ITS integration. And we anticipate that it will be done later this spring. There's also two bridge replacements that are in design, Miko Bridge in District Three and Sea Ray in District Two. For the upcoming year, we have three categories, as you'll see on the slide. We have replacements, rehabilitation, and planned maintenance. Just as far as, in the interest of timing, I'll just point out that the numbers of bridges are the numbers of items or bridges that we have to fix. And on the right-hand side, there are colors which correspond to the chart. So for example, Mather Swing Bridge, we not only have a planned maintenance project, but we also have a rehabilitation project. Switching to major capital projects in progress. So this slide is only a select few of the twenty-seven capital improvement projects, which total forty-point-three-million dollars in our current budget being worked, just trying to show that there's some great projects out there being done all around the county. However, as I mentioned in my opening slide, there's an additional six-hundred-and-forty-six non-capital road, bridge, and traffic projects, which, in many cases, maintenance projects that look like construction, which I don't have here. So accordingly, I intend to move past this unless there's any questions. On a revenue-per-mile basis, what this slide is showing you is that we have the most amount of lane miles but receive the least amount of gas taxes on a per-road mile basis from some of the surrounding counties. This information is based on publicly available information. What we don't have, though, is that we know for a fact that several of the counties surrounding us receive additional infrastructure sales tax or public service tax towards their roads. However, we attempted to get that information from our fellow counties, and were unsuccessful in doing that. Accordingly, we wanted to just show an apples-to-apples comparison with the information we have. But if you can imagine, for Seminole, Volusia, and Osceola, we know that the amount is more with the infrastructure and the public service tax. We're just not sure how much. But again, we have the most amount of miles out of these four counties, and on a per-mile basis, we have the least. When requirements continue to grow and outpace available resources, not just from a purchasing power perspective, but from capacity as well as wear and tear on our roadways. So the next slide, going back to the theme of paving, resurfacing, and reconstruction, the numbers on this slide represent the proposed miles by categorization. The funding that is shown is flat and is only increasing due to CPI and our best projection of what we anticipate receiving. Preservation, as you'll see, is the green hashed area. You'll see that we start out very slowly, and over the next five years, we continue to increase it. The intent there is that we want to have a pilot program and ensure that we have both monitored and documented that we've got empirical data to support that preservation is working for us. To be clear on preservation, that effectively is preventative maintenance. There's a number of different ways we can approach it. It really depends on the specific road, the volume of traffic, and the PCI to determine what type of product we would put down. But what we've seen with other municipalities, we've seen the same thing, and they've seen success. The intent there, going back to Slide Nine, is that we could mitigate some of the topple, particularly the good or blue regions from slipping in and continuing to topple down to ultimately a poor condition. At the end of the five-year cycle, we anticipate reconstruction backlog to nearly be eliminated at the current funding levels. We may be able to direct a portion of reconstruction back to overcapacity, but at this point, it's premature to say. I want to be clear that preservation is not a panacea. We still need to perform some rehabilitation and limited reconstruction in perpetuity as roads will continue to topple from fair and satisfactory. Also, assuming preservation works for us, as I mentioned, we'll be undertaking a pilot program, it will take many years to get to the point where all roads will be caught in time. So there are roads that are now, that are in the blue or satisfactory category, that we're not going to be able to get. The ideal time for treating roads in preservation is one to three years. So we're not going to get to every road, and it will take us some time to actually get to the heart of that. Currently, the program and projections are also heavily reliant on consultant support for road condition updates, backlog analysis, prediction models, which are the future conditions, and multi-year budget analysis. So we intend to request in our budget submission for the purchase of pavement management software and full-time road management position to organize, manage, and drive selecting the right roads at the right time so that we can garner savings, but more importantly, be in the driver's seat to make sure that we are effectively using county resources. Under the longer-term strategy, I'll show you a little bit about the possibilities preservation may yield. So now, looking at the five-year forecast for bridges. As I depicted in the previous bridge slide, FY 2021's single biggest expense is the Sea Ray Bridge Project. The numbers are just as before, where it shows the categories. The additional category in this slide, however, is projected maintenance, and that's for future unplanned maintenance. We know that now that we have a bridge program and we'll be getting biannual reports about our bridges, there will be things that are broken that we'll need to fix. So what we've done here is we've been very conservative. We've only planned seventy-four thousand dollars a year for things like guardrails and other things that come up. If there's something major that comes up, obviously, that will be unfunded, and we'll have to address it with the board later. But this plan will be part of our budget submission. And important to note on here, the large increase in FY 2324 is for Mather's Bridge recoding. Otherwise, it's standard items that have been identified and prioritized by the bridge consultant that we've hired. In addition, we'll be focusing on training and dedicated staff to manage the bridge program more effectively going forward. Now, switching to a longer-term perspective. So I mentioned preservation, maintenance or preservation earlier. So we would begin transitioning from what has been a worst-first approach to an optimization approach. This photo, taken in 2018, shows the benefits that preventive maintenance may have for us. This is a city road, not specifically from this area or the state, quite frankly, but it helps illuminate what preservation may be able to do. So back in 2004, the entire road was milled and overlaid. The left side received no additional treatments. The right side received preservation techniques in 2010. Eight years later, the results speak for themselves. The right side of the road is clearly in better condition than the left side. And some research shows that for every dollar that we invest in preservation, we can save at least four to ten dollars in rehabilitation or reconstruction costs. Additionally, optimization accomplishes protecting the pavement structure, slowing down the rate of pavement deterioration from UV, water seepage, and oxidation, but also we can correct some pavement service deficiencies. So now, switching to our long-term funding needs. When we describe capacity, and we'll get into a series of slides, which will actually go into capacity, it's based on thresholds of daily volumes corresponding to levels of service grades. And traffic engineers grade the operation of road segments from Level of Service A to Level of Service F. So there are six levels there. That's based on the number of cars compared to what the number of lanes and the level of service that we have defined in our comprehensive plan. In the case of Level of Service E and F, those mean that they're failing traffic operations and bumper-to-bumper traffic conditions. Within our Brevard County Comprehensive Plan, we actually define our Level of Service as E, which, again, is considered failing but is above Level F. In some cases, most, or I should say, most agencies, including FDOT, have adopted a Level of Service of D as their standard and lowest acceptable level. It's important to note that most of our roads within the urban area boundary, which is most of Brevard, is defined in our comprehensive plan as Level of Service E. Only a few roads within rural areas are defined as Level D or Level of Service D. So the chart on the left shows the list of unfunded nearing, at, or overcapacity projects. And this isn't some future number. This is actually today. This is what we are assured today to identify and address. These numbers are derived from Space Coast TPO assessments. The assessments were actually done in 2019, pre-pandemic. We then take that data and call out what is for the county. And what you see here on the left-hand side, there's two categories. There's partially unfunded, and there's fully unfunded. So the partially unfunded, this is largely where we have grants for projects like Ellis Road, Hollywood Boulevard, and a couple others, where we have some state grants to do primarily design or right-of-way acquisition. However, and we only have seven-point-six-million of county funds tied up in that. However, the construction is wholly unfunded at this time. On the right side, this is showing the Traffic Management Center. The Traffic Management Center is critical to our future plans to be able to mitigate capacity issues correctly and is something that is needed. The state had previously said if we designed it, which we are currently in the process of doing, they would fund the construction. Thus far, we have not seen that intent. We'll continue working at it. If they don't help, however, the county, we will have to look at, if this is a priority for us, we'll have to either look at funding internally, or perhaps with your support, we can help apply pressure to local municipalities, which would also benefit from it, and see if we can get additional revenue sources from them. So again, today's unfunded dollars stand at five-hundred-and-eighty-one-million. The roadway capacity improvements are five-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-eight-million will be the basis of discussion in subsequent slides and reflects increased capacity requirements since the last snapshot that we provided, as well as some inflation and updated right-of-way costs. Not depicted here is additional staff, capital, equipment, and other resources that might be needed if we actually were to see any of this funding with the support of the board. So sticking with the capacity, near or at capacity, wanted to juxtapose our capacity issues with the current transportation impact fee districts. So the transportation impact fee program, as I'm sure you know, are imposed on new development and are transferred to appropriate transportation benefit districts. In addition, we have the ability to use grants, gas, and gas tax for capacity, but it has been the board's priority that we focus on resurfacing and reconstruction, specifically for the grants and gas tax. The five benefit district boundaries are shown on the map, and they have their current balance. We cannot shift money between one transportation impact district and another. The North Mainland and the Central Mainland, you can see, have the most amount of funds, while the other districts have very little. So funds must be used for capital or transportation capacity improvements, and again, only within that specific district. This means that a large portion of this will be untapped until such time that we have affordable requirements. And as I'll describe in a few minutes, we do have some mitigation that we think we can use some of it, but a lot of it will remain untapped. To be clear, the seven-and-a-half-million dollars in the chart is the balance, meaning it takes into account any balances forward, any expenses, and it's basically what is left in the kitty right now. TIPS are insufficient to pay the cost of the capacity improvements that I mentioned on the previous slide of five-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-eight-million dollars, because that's today's requirement and will continue to grow with increased population growth. So on the next slide, this is trying to illuminate what our current capacity problems are. Without getting into specifics of each project, you could see that, and I should point, or I should step back for a second. The blue stars identify all the roads in near-capacity. The red stars identify the roads that are at capacity or overcapacity. And again, the Space Coast TPO performs assessments countywide, and we pull this data out for what is county responsibility. So the map shows in the South Mainland District, which we only have eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, and the South Beaches District, which we only have three-hundred-and-five-thousand, we have the most amount of projects and not enough funds to address them with our TIP funds. When we shift to the Central Mainland District, we have two-point-four-million dollars. And it's generally a good news story. The good news is, we don't have a lot of capacity issues. The bad news is, we have a lot of money that's tied specifically to this district and not a lot of projects to focus it on. You'll notice, however, that Wickham shows up both at near-capacity and over-capacity. The challenge there is that five-point-three-million dollars adds up to eighty-point-two-million dollars to solve. So again, two-point-four-million sounds like a great idea or a great number, but rather, we don't have enough money to actually address the true issues today. Moving to the next slide, the North Mainland District has the most amount of TIP at three-point-nine-million. Again, another great news story. We only have one project that is near-capacity. That's Grissom Parkway. And as we discussed yesterday with Commissioner Pritchett, we're going to take a look with the TIP funds we have to look at some assessments going forward of what we can do. But again, we do not have the funding to actually address the capacity issues. The Merritt Island District has the least amount of TIP funds right now of a hundred-and-forty-thousand, but it's important to note here that we recently allocated one-point-nine-million towards the South Courtney Parkway. So that is taken out of the kitty, and it's something that we are working on today. We are actually reviewing engineering service proposals for the design of improvements to that road. But also, another point is that to actually do the full capacity requirement, we're actually six-point-seven-million dollars short. So we will, with the improvements we're doing, we're going to expand to a three-lane road, basically turning lanes there. But the requirement at this point is for five lanes. So to summarize the last several slides, we currently have twenty-five miles of deficient roads due to heavy traffic volumes, most of which is in the south. We're in the process of addressing some of these issues. I mentioned South Courtney. We have some partially-funded projects, I mentioned earlier in my presentation, Ellis and Hollywood Widening. But these are primarily through grants, and at this time, we only have enough funds for design and right-of-way. Construction remains unfunded, as does the entire rest of the five-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-eight-million dollars. So we are looking to alternatives that can be implemented to defer or mitigate some of these costly road widening. One of the things that we have been implementing for several years and we'll continue to look at is shifting to utilizing more ITS strategies, which is low-cost technology, so that we can optimize signal timing and coordination to improve travel reliability in combination with high-benefit intersection capacity and improvements. So we have a consultant, which we brought onboard several months ago, that is doing a deeper dive into the types of capacity projects we can do. But since the feedback that we received last week of the Citizens Board Review Committee, we identified at a very high level that if we leverage three-point-two-five-million dollars of existing TIP funding, we can actually improve five intersections in the county. Five is not a lot. It does not solve this five-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-eight-million-dollar problem, but it is a start. We've also identified that there's an additional nine-point-two-million dollars of these types of capacity projects. Again, at first glance, we're going to have our consultant look at it a lot more in depth. But if we had an additional nine-point-two-million, we could do some more, eleven more intersections. So by some additional time, it does not solve the current five-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-eight-million-dollar capacity project or problem. So on, as we're closing out my brief, what we wanted to present was some revenue-generating options. We could potentially garner up to sixty-million dollars more of revenue each year if each of these were adopted. And I know that's a big ask, but it's something to make sure that we have, we identify as an option. So back in 2014, the Blue Ribbon Commission supported a one-fifth and a ninth-cent motor-fuel tax. Neither was adopted by the board. The revenue sources on this chart include the one-fifth cent, the ninth-cent motor-fuel tax. We already do receive the diesel portion, a discretionary sales tax, and the public service tax. The top two need four or five commissioners or a referendum. two need four or five commissioners or a referendum, whereas the bottom two need three or five commissioners to place on a referendum. I mentioned earlier on the dollar per mile chart that most of our neighboring counties already receive discretionary or public service tax towards their roads. Specifically for the 9th cent fuel tax, it does not require that we share with municipalities, whereas the 1/5th cent, if implemented, were required to share via inter-local agreement. Discretionary sales tax, if implemented, would be levied throughout the county. However, there's many different types of discretionary certaxes, including charter county and regional transportation system, infrastructure, et cetera. So while the laws vary slightly, they can be distributed in a variety of ways through inter-local agreement or by statutory formulas. But the bottom line here is that generating more revenue to address our capacity is where we need the board's most support going forward. And I'm sorry, man. I was just going to finish with the summary if I got a second. So we've had lots of successes. I tried to enumerate some of them, although brief at the beginning of my presentation, but we do need to address near and overcapacity projects in the future. Our way forward is we're going to start transitioning to road preservation. We're implementing our bridge program. We're developing further analysis of our overcapacity mitigation plan and projects, as I mentioned. We're also developing an objective tool to prioritize all unfunded future work. And although not really discussed or highlighted during my presentation, we're strengthening partnerships, looking for cost-sharing opportunities with FDOT, various agencies, other local municipalities, to address some of these mutual areas of concern. We're also working with our outside financial audit firm to review other opportunities, how to effectively spend the monies that we do have, and we're working to drive down vacancies and working on retention issues. I want to leave you with this. There's a lot of great news here, some great projects that the Public Works team completed throughout the past year, and we have been good stewards of the dollars we've received thus far. However, as I mentioned, capacity is the next hurdle and the biggest area we need your support with.
Thank you, Chair. A few thoughts. You know, there are a few things, Mark, that scare me in life. The facehuggers and the chestbursters from aliens, they definitely scare me. And then also this $15-an-hour minimum wage, insofar as the impact it's not likely it's going to have on both materials and labor. My concern is, it's in all likelihood, and I say that to a good degree of confidence, that everything is going to get more expensive and profoundly so for your department with respect to repaving and maintaining roads. I'm just going to tell you where I'm at, wherever the other folks are at, maybe they'll tell you. I'm not going to impose, as a commissioner, gas tax or an additional gas tax on folks beyond what's there. I don't necessarily have a problem putting on the ballot for voters to decide either a quarter percent or a half percent sales tax. Again, with it being up to them to decide if they think it's appropriate, given the needs, but I'm not going to impose it as a commissioner. I'm just not. You've talked a little bit about maintenance needs. You've talked a little bit about capacity needs. From my perspective, certainly with my district's, my district's portion of the funds, if you want to look at it that way, I certainly have a strong preference to maintenance over capacity when we get to a better position, and I think we are slowly but steadily getting there. The data is pretty clear in that. Then we can shift gears and balance it perhaps to what folks might think is a little more equitable. But I just, I'd like your thoughts if you could talk for even a couple minutes on, on the risks and benefits of potentially spending down what we have in reserves, potentially borrowing, whether it's from partially funded projects that really have a while yet to go before they're fully funded, maybe borrowing if it's eligible for state revolving fund money, or even potentially going the bond route. Because my thought is, even if it puts us on a balance sheet, on a sheet of paper, in a more precarious position now, knowing that we have to do it, and knowing that our expenses are just going to exponentially increase, I would rather take the much smaller hit now than take a much bigger hit by kicking the can down the road. It may not be a politically popular thing, but, you know, I think it's unquestionably the smart thing to do. So I just, you know, I don't know if you've given some thought as to separate and apart from the tax items that you've mentioned, some of which I think are just unpalatable and some of which I don't know how palatable they may or may not be, but going those other routes, spending down reserves, maybe borrowing funds?
Yes, sir. So I think, you know, one thing to first point out is that right now, I mentioned, the current capacity requirements, again, as defined by the Space Coast TPO, sits at $572.8 million. What we've projected over a 20-year cycle, if we continue to see the population growth as we have, we've done some projections. We could be completely off, but we inflated it 2.5% per year. We then tried to correlate it to additional growth of population. We were very conservative in that. We said if we just saw a 1% increase over the next 20 years, the current capacity issues would turn into a $1.1 billion problem. So we've also looked at, what if we actually did garner all 60 million, and we could actually get to the point in 10 years where we have a net surplus and we can, you know, start buying that down. So that, I think, is one issue. We're also, we knew that this was a big ask and not sure where all the commissioners would sit on it. So one of the things that I mentioned was that we not only started looking at mitigation, and we have a consultant working on that, but at the request of the CBRC last week, we put together some quick, high-level numbers to show that we could use some of the money that we have and the capacity projects. Again, it's only five. It does not solve this bigger issue, but it can start chipping away at it and give us a little bit more time. As far as spending down other money in either reserve or on projects, that's actually one of the focuses of the audit team, working with us to take a look at that and how we can actually better, you know, spend money. They're all worthwhile projects, but if we're not going to get to them for five or 10 years, can we use some of it now? And that's something that they're looking at, and I believe we're going to be briefing county leadership and then going forward in the coming months. As far as bonds and stuff, I'm actually going to maybe phone a friend and see if John wants to, you know.
Yeah, actually, for any bonding, you need a revenue source. So if the board provides us a revenue source, and then you wanted us to bond it out to be able to do more projects, but we'd have to identify one or more of those revenue sources that are here to be able to do that. So that's what the issue would be relative to, you know, to bonding.
I would add to that, that the, the gas tax, the LOGT and constitutional gas taxes currently are committed to and dedicated to paying the debt service on bond proceeds, which will, per the schedule, not be defeased until, I believe it's 2036. And the, it's the only outstanding bond on the transportation side at this time. We recently paid another one off, but so that, so we're already bonded. In effect, we've spent all of those funds at this point. And so as Frank said, we'd need a new revenue stream or source to be able to do any further bonding.
Are you finished, sir?
I'll follow up with them individually outside of the meeting. I appreciate it, though. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Are you needing some direction from us, Mr. Abate?
Well, thank you for asking. And basically, on this particular area, we wanted to give you the where we were, where we are, which I think he's done very well. And then, if we've been good stewards and we're using the resources appropriately, for us to move into the capacity issue outside of what Mark indicated and mitigating with the ITS system, which we are moving, we are going to be coming up with a plan to do that to the degree it could. What we really need to know is, does the board want us to be moving anything forward relative to one or more of the items that Mark had delineated on that page of potential revenue sources? Do you want us to look at anything? And obviously, we would need a board to look at whether or not you want to do anything with either the 9th cent fuel tax, the local option, or the discretionary sales tax or public service tax, any one or more of those items. We'd be looking for the board's input as to whether or not there's three or more of you who want us to pursue that, and we would then bring something back to the board if you do.
Mr. Tobias.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for itemizing this so well as far as what needed a simple majority and what needed a super majority. Of course, all these need referendum. However, I think during these austere times, it's probably not the right direction to go. So that means that for at least the, what, top two, you'd have to run the table outside of me. And to be quite honest, I don't think at any time. I appreciate the work a few years ago that the Blue Ribbon Committee did, but quite frankly, it was the most affluent folks in Brevard County where a really penny on gas tax is not going to make a whole hill of beans as they drive their Land Rovers and Mercedes down the road. But when you deal with added burden, certainly in these times where unemployment is high, I don't think it's the right direction to go. You mentioned discretionary sales tax. What you failed to mention is that we have unique ones here in Brevard County already that are certainly regressive on our citizens. The Saber Indian River Lagoon is something that is unique here. Also, we unfortunately have the capital school tax. So it's not like, you know, we don't have any other ones that our citizens are paying for. So I appreciate you putting this out here, but from, at least for the time being, from County Commission, District Three. I not only would not support these, were they on the referendum, I certainly would not support in the first place to put them there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ozonka, Commissioner Smith, do you have comments, sir?
All right, I'll wade into this. I've been a big proponent of roads ever since I took office, and I understand spending money isn't, taxing people isn't popular at all. But the other side of the coin is you pay now, or you've got a lot more light to make. And I think Mark alluded to that. It was every dollar spent on maintenance, was that the statement you made?
Right, with preservation, yes, sir.
Save $4 to $10 later on. So if you can explain to me how spending a dollar today isn't important to save $4 to $10 tomorrow, I'm with you. But I don't, I don't, I don't understand that thought process, because the roads aren't going to heal themselves. They're not going to get better by themselves. We just endured a 30% or 40% increase since Biden's in office. So a penny, or however we're talking about, I understand every time somebody gets gas, they're going to say, geez, you know, I would have saved $2 a gallon had they not passed us. But if five years down the road, we're saving them $4 to $6 because we spent money now to fix these roads, they may not thank us, but we know we did the right thing. So that's my position.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bernath, clearly you didn't do a good enough job explaining the difference between maintenance and capacity. So my understanding of the explanation that we just got was the 60 million would go to capacity. So the analogy that Mr. Bernath gave was dealing, I understand, with maintenance and not necessarily with capacity. Is that a fair?
That is correct. The analogy was specific to maintenance, but I think to Commissioner Smith's point, the same is true. We did-
Hadn't you said our backlog, given the resources that we currently have, have decreased?
For, for capacity?
No, for maintenance. Didn't, didn't, I'm sorry, you had 37 slides here. Wasn't one of them that the maintenance backlog has decreased? Is that correct?
It has.
So given our, Commissioner Smith, so given our current funding, we have seen a decrease in the amount of maintenance. Can you give us an analogy that would be comparable for capacity issues? Is it for every dollar we spend, we get?
I don't think I have a good analogy, but just to, but just to point out again, when we did some rough calculations, if we inflated year-over-year, the backlog that we know today and correlated it to the population growth, we saw from 572.8 million to 1.1 billion. So I don't have a great analogy like I threw out for the maintenance side, but to Commissioner Smith's point, it will cost us more, not only because the, the road capacity, materials, and labor will cost more, but with increased population, there'll be more overcapacity. And so if we don't get after it, there will be a challenge down the road.
Mark, just a couple other thoughts on that. And I, I don't disagree with Commissioner Tobias's point, at least in the sense that, yeah, we're doing, and you're doing a very good job with respect to reducing the backlog on maintenance. But the fact remains, there is a backlog. There's a substantial backlog that costs money to address. And if we can save a substantial amount of money, whether, even if it were to spend double in a few years, that, to me, would still be a very compelling reason to spend some now. And I'll just throw it out a little more directly again. As to a discretionary sales tax, there's just no way I would even agree to put a 1% on the ballot. But I, I'm not necessarily opposed to a referendum for either a quarter or a half percent. You know, I think that's something where we have the needs, and either we're going to have a little bit of pain now, or we're going to have a ton more pain down the road. I don't want to pay more than I have to to buy a good. I really don't. But if it means that my road's going to fall apart, or alternatively, it's just going to sit and disrepair for far longer, to me, you know, you look at the core obligations of government, and right up there with public safety, it's infrastructure. And whether you're looking at utilities, we're going to hear from Eddie in a little bit, whether you're looking at, you know, any, any issue with respect to stormwater drainage, or whether you're talking about a road, I mean, it's all a core obligation. So this is the kind of thing, if we ever spend money along with public safety, I mean, this is really where we need to spend it.
I think, sir, you have done a great job on this presentation, because we've all been here a while. And I remember, Mr. Denninghoff, you got this task back in the beginning of trying to figure out how to negotiate these funds. We would get rid of the reconstruction, I'm sorry, the resurfacing going into the reconstruction, and it's worked. So this is really, it's really worked well. Commissioner Tobias, I agree with you. I think we're making progress on this route. I remember when we did that, we worked on borrowing reserves from one part of the county to pay off those debts, so we'd have X amount of dollars to add to it, which greatly gave us the ability to get ahead of this. I really don't want to bond again, because you get the money upfront, but you got to make the payment. So later on, you're going to have to try to find funds for it. The capacity issues, when I met with Ms. Gillette, is mainly in two, three, and five. I think Wickham has a lot of problems. And she explained it, that if we don't start working on capacity, there's no way to expand these roads. I mean, even with the funds, you're running out of rooms. They've got to work on that. And I think the IT program that you guys have been talking about is a very important one. But Commissioners in Districts Two, Three, and Five, I think this is heaviest on you guys. And so if you came and you said that you wanted to put something on the ballot, you have me with that. Our capacity, again, we haven't had to spend as much of our capacity funds, so I'm not really having that much of a struggle. And I think our maintenance is keeping up a bit. So you guys would be, as far as I'm concerned, if you need me to help you with that, I would, I would help you with that vote to get it on the ballot as well. So Commissioner Ozonka.
Yes. I think we're kind of in a unique position, because we've limited ourselves, you know, whether as a commission that previously allowed the tax cap to go on the ballot in the past, but the people voted for it. They voted for that tax cap. So I don't know, I don't know that denying them the opportunity to vote for improved, not just roadways, but quality of life. It is, it is a quality of life issue. And I know Palm Bay surprisingly voted for their own road referendum. So I'm not saying it's an impossibility. I don't know that the gas tax is the route I want to go, because as people transition, and my staff just brought this, you know, up the other day, as they transition to gas or electric vehicles and gas vehicles, I mean, they're not going to be paying that tax. And more and more companies are going to be able to do it cheaper than the most popular one. So, I mean, I would be willing to at least consider it, assuming the language is extremely clear, not deceptive to the average, you know, person reading their ballot. I don't want it to be convoluted with a bunch of legalese and a bunch of, you know, fluff that makes, that tricks people into voting for something that they think that they're doing. But I think as our population grows, we've sort of put ourselves in a box, or at least without, without, maybe with good intentions, but we've kind of put ourselves in a box with what we're allowed to, what we're allowed to do with the revenues that we have. We've really limited those revenues by, you know, capping ourselves with the CPI or, you know, or the less 3%. So I'm just a little, you know, capacity is important, because if we don't address capacity, we're just going to wear out our existing roads faster as that capacity increases. So there's, there's a cost there, too, that probably hasn't been considered. But, you know, I know that that's one of the biggest complaints that comes to my office. And I think since this item is very- And I think since this item is very non-emotional and we can spell it out pretty quickly, for, quickly, clearly for the voters, I may not have a problem with it on the ballot, assuming that I'm okay with the language. So, I mean, that would be something I'd, I'd consider. But I don't think the gas tax, the local, the gas tax is the way to go. Because I think less and less people are going to be using it. Well, I mean, I would probably look at the last two quicker. And I'm not saying, I'm not committing to any of that. I want to see the language. I want to see the explanation. I want to see what it means for the county versus other municipalities. I don't want to do their work for them either. And I'm not saying I don't want to help, but I want to make sure that, you know, we're putting ourselves in a good position. And we're giving people, you know, full transparent view of what they're voting for.
Okay, Commissioner Loger.
I don't know if this really amounts to horse trading, but perhaps it does. I still think it's, it's the way to go. I think I'm almost there with you, Commissioner Zonka. What, what I'll tell you, though, and I, I don't know that I'm as, as, I'll just put out there, I don't like the, the L O G P. I don't, I don't like that at this point. I certainly would, would absolutely, under no circumstances, impose it as a member of this body. I, I don't know really that I'm thrilled with putting it on a referendum. I think the sales tax, I feel more comfortable putting on the ballot than I do this public services tax. That said, whether it's a quarter or a half percent, I'm not, you know, I'm not willing to put higher than that on the ballot. You know, I would defer to, to you and Commissioner Prichard as to where you're comfortable between those two. Again, and I, I need to see the language just as you do because I'm, I'm not agreeing to it just categorically without seeing what is I'm agreeing to first. But I would throw out there too, from my perspective, in order to have my support on this, we would need to disproportionately focus on the front end until we address the maintenance issues. And then we can take whatever we need to and go toward capacity in, in a way that you may be happier with. I'm not saying capacity doesn't matter, but I think our biggest bang for the buck is on the maintenance side. And if it's 75, 25 on the front end until we get that down to a reasonable number, I'd be okay with that. And in fact, I'd be a lot more likely to support it than if it were disproportionately the other way around where we're saying, okay, 75, 80% of it now is going toward capacity, and we're, we're just kind of ticking away. And, yeah, we're, we're doing well year over year with the backlog. But I want to see that backlog disintegrate or vanish. I hate to say disintegrate. It's not really a good term with, with roads. But, you know, that's how I would support it, if I were to support it.
Okay, I'm, I'm imagining that Mr. Abate and John, you know, we're good at this. You would come with each commission office and help us figure out what would, what would be best and how the funds would be spent. And then we'd do a presentation, correct? Yeah, because, you know, we're kind of tough on you too. Yeah. Commissioner Smith, did you want to throw anything in before we move on, sir?
Not that I have my mic on.
I can't see it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just cognizant of the fact that we have some, we have to do something with capacity, with maintenance, we have, we have to do it all. And I don't know which one of you said it's a, it's a quality of life issue, but it really is. If you have really bad traffic and your roads are really bad, people don't like living here. And people that want to move here may not want to move here because roads are bad and traffic's bad. We've, we've had it really good for a really long time. And I can tell the difference when I, 192 Wickham Road is just crazy. When I opened my business back in 1987 on 192, we weren't even open on Saturdays. And the tire stores weren't even because, weren't either because there wasn't enough traffic. There weren't enough people on 192. And you go on 192 now, it's a parking lot. But back then, I used to joke, and I was serious. I could, I could blindfold you and take you out to 192, and you could walk across that road and I could hit by a car because there weren't any. So times have changed, and it's not going to get better. We have a great place to live. People know it. We've got robust industry growing in this county. So it's not going to slow down. And the roads, like I said, they're not going to build themselves and they're not going to fix themselves. So whatever we do, we got to do something. So I'm with you guys. Whatever, whatever you think you're, and I, and I know if we put it in the hands of Mr. Abate and Mr. Denninghoff, we'll get some good options and then we can make the decisions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And not to throw a wrench in the whole system, but we heard at our last meeting that SORAL, the discretionary halfpenny during the 10 years is not going to most likely fix the situation. So my guess is we'll probably, one way or another, whether we get that on, you know, through citizen involvement or whether a board makes a decision, that's a discretionary tax on there. We have Eels, too, that potentially would need voter approval. The capital school one was just continued. So this would not be a unique additional tax that was levied on our citizens. This would be one of three or four. It's just something to keep in mind as, as, as we move forward.
Well, I think you bring up an excellent point. And the, and the point, and Commissioner Zonka said the same thing. We've kind of put ourselves in a box with the caps that we have. So it's, it's almost come down to the fact that if we want to continue fixing things, it's going to be, it's going to be user fees.
User fees, yeah. Yep. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, just one, one more brief-
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. And I'm sorry for keeping you up here, Mark. I know this is probably one of the more stressful parts of the job. You know, it's like going to, what was the, I can't remember the, the show that they had where they had Shark Tank. It's like going to Shark Tank and having to present in front of all these vicious alpha predators. Be that as it may, you know, I, I think, you know, to me, the most important thing Commissioner Tobias is, and I, I think we've all pretty much made this clear. No one's talking about imposing it as a body. We're talking about letting the voters decide. And as Commissioner Zonka said, and I agree with her 1,000% on this, at least 100%, maybe not quite 1,000, the language needs to be clear. I, I'm not willing to support something that's going to mislead the voters into what it is they're being asked to support or reject. I can tell you, yeah, I agree. The SORAL program and the funds that have been raised and will be raised with that are not going to fully resolve the problem by any stretch of the imagination. I have never thought that they would. I would venture to guess, most of you never thought that that would fully resolve the problem. That is a monstrous problem that involves not just Brevard County, but depending on how far up and down you, you really want to look, a dead minimum of five other counties along that waterway. And we are the only ones that have elected to tax ourselves for that purpose, whether that's wise, whether that's unwise, whether the structure of the tax is, is perfect or as good as it could be. I, I certainly have my thoughts. I don't want to say anything pejorative and, you know, not helpful with respect to that. But I will tell you, this is a separate issue. There's no question whatsoever. This is a core obligation that, that is on us to maintain. And I get that it, it sucks, quite frankly, to talk about even allowing voters to choose to tax themselves. But, you know, given that the options are pretty clear in terms of we do it now and the voters pay something at their, at their discretion if they choose to do that, or alternatively, we allow them not to do it, or we don't even give them the choice, which is, is really the, the alternative position that I'm hearing. And they're going to have to do something that's going to be far costlier to them down the road. You know, it's not simply an option of saying, well, we'll let them elect to tax themselves, or, or we're not going to even elect them, elect to give them that choice. It's, are we going to do that now? Or down the road, when it absolutely has to occur because we're in a more catastrophic scenario, are we going to then force the decision on them or make the decision for them without giving them the input? And as a reward, they will pay a, a far higher price for that at the end of the day. As far as what the other discretionary taxes are, for me, when I look at, at millage, and I understand it separate from this, when I look at my millage every year, they're 20-something buckets, I think. I mean, it's, it's just a tremendous number. At the end of the day, as a property, as a property taxpayer, my biggest concern is the bottom line. What do I have to write to the government? How much does it cost me? Whether this percent goes to this or that percent goes to that. As a property taxpayer, I'm not talking about as an elected official, but as someone that pays into that, that millage, I don't care as much about where the individual pennies go as, as much as I do, how much is this going to cost me at the end of the day? With respect to the, the sales tax, I don't know that we have a, a higher, necessarily a lower, sales tax than, let's say, the adjoining counties. I mean, we must be within, let's say, half a percent of it. We could certainly, and I'd like to look at it prior to having this come back. But it's not that, that we're known for standing out as being, you know, the number one taxer in the state of Florida or the number one taxer in central Florida. If we were, I would say perhaps that's another concern that needs to be factored into the decision. But, you know, whether, whether there's a half-cent sales tax for SORAL, whether there's a, a chunk that goes to the schools, I, I look at it in, in aggregate and say, what is it, what is it really going to cost them at the end of the day? And how do we make that money work for them in the most effective means that focuses on those core obligations? So whether they, they continue the SORAL tax or not, to me, is a separate question from do we allow the voters the choice with respect to taking a little bit of a hit now or taking a monster hit later? But I, I think there's obviously a lot that needs to get put together before we can even make an intelligent choice with respect to whether that's a, a route that we want to go.
Thank you, Mr. Bernath.
Thank you all.
Mr. Abate?
We're going to turn it over at this point very briefly. Jerry, I'm sure, will be only a few minutes with his presentation.
Yeah. Great, that's it. Okay, Commissioners, thanks for some time this afternoon. I was asked to provide a, a brief situational awareness for you with regard to the impact of the minimum wage mandates on our organization. And what I've got for you today is just the one slide where we, we have provided for you three scenarios. These are by no means recommendations. These are snapshots of potentially what the cost of implementing the minimum wage mandates will be from a low end to potential high end. So the first scenario is simply if all we did were to meet the mandatory minimums for all employees currently not making minimum wage as that will advance over the course of years. As a brief reminder, we will have a new minimum wage of $10 an hour by September of this year. The wage will increase $1 an hour thereafter through 2026 to hit the $15 cap. Today, we have about 13 employees who are below the $10 minimum wage, but we have over 700 employees below $15 an hour. When we roll all that out, the impact on Brevard County Board of County Commissioners, just to meet the mandate, mandated minimums is $3.7 million through 2026. Now, we want to give you a couple of other scenarios to consider. If, in the first scenario of all we did was address the minimum wages, we're pushing the bottom end up. We're not, we're freezing wages at the upper ends. You have salary compression. To address the compression issues, potentially, if you were to provide, let's say, a 2% COLA to everybody who did not get a minimum wage increase, you could see that scenario too. Meet the minimum requirements as in scenario one, add a 2% COLA to everybody else, and you're looking at a $2.5 million increase in just the first year and a $17 million investment over the course of the five-year program. Scenario three is just another option to deal with compression. Some people will look at this and say, well, that's the simple solution. If the minimum wage goes up $1 an hour, then raise everybody's salary $1 an hour. Sounds simple, but the impact is significant. You're looking at $6.2 million in just the first year and an, and a hit of over $37.7 million by 2026. Now, a couple of caveats for this. This is just the Board of County Commissioners. We've asked the charter officers for an estimate as well as to what impacts for them would be. If they applied just the scenario one option, we're looking at another $850,000 to over $1 million in additional salary demands from the charter officers. If we play other scenarios out, the numbers could be significantly different. And as noted on the bottom of the slide, while we addressed minimum wage shortfalls in our current bargaining unit agreements, we didn't run them through changes in the step plan. We didn't advance bargaining unit members through the steps over five years. Again, that's a much more significant exercise, which we are engaging in with the budget office right now. So again, the numbers would be significantly different depending on how we ran this in negotiations. So that's it. I've got, I was supposed to do this in one breath. I took two. Any questions? And I will, otherwise I will turn this over to the county manager. Yes, sir.
And I, I understand this is a little premature, perhaps, Jerry, but has there been any feeling whatsoever, any indication whatsoever, what some of the other comparably sized counties are doing? For instance, Volusia or?
No, sir, we've had nothing from, from the other jurisdictions. I think everybody at this point is still just wrestling with, what do we have to do to meet the minimums? And then what does that do to our pay and classification plans beyond that? The, the impacts are going to be very, very different depending on how they're currently structured, what the differentials are between classifications.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
I think that year one is maybe not going to be so tough. But I think we have to realize that we're going to have to be able to have funds to cover these costs in future years because we don't have a choice. So it's going to be very interesting what you guys are going to do with that after four years.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you?
Okay, I, I believe at this point, if the board's ready, we would like to go right into the fire rescue presentation.
Thank you, Jill. Good afternoon, Board. It really is good to be here. I called my mom and dad last night who live in Killen, Alabama. They let me know it was 12 degrees there. And I knew, right then, I made a wise decision. Me and my wife did, we needed to retire in Brevard County. So it's, it really is good to be here. I'm Matthew Wallace. I'm your Director of Public Safety for the county. With me, I have Chief Mark Schulmeyer, who's our county fire chief. We also have some senior leaders from the fire department in and around, as well as some, a lot of field personnel that are here. And I want to just want to say upfront, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity that you're allowing us to have a conversation about a fire assessment. Resource conversations are just critically important for organizations. And just allowing us to be here and having this conversation is, is just really awesome. So, so thank you for letting us be here. So, thank you for letting us be here. Our presentation is about 10 slides. It's a little bit more than Jerry's, a little bit less than Mark Bernath's, so hopefully we can get through those pretty quick. We have three main objectives today, if we could during our discussion. If we could generate board discussion about a fire assessment. If we could receive your direction on where you'd like to go in terms of a fire assessment. You will see a tiered approach that we are recommending to bring up that's covering a very wide range of fire assessment components. If you can focus just down and target which individuals you would like to see, that will allow staff then to come back at a future commission meeting and cost those out and get those going. And finally, my third objective is we will set up a way forward as we move forward and what the next steps are in those timelines. So, with that said, if we can get started, the fire assessment history. Fire assessment is, produces money in our fire operations budget, and it is one of two main components in our fire operations side. You'll see that in the next slide of why that's so important, that we're able to produce those new dollars into that organization, or into that fund. The methodology of a fire assessment is that what does it cost for a fire engine to go to a resident to put a fire out on their house? And that cost is what the fire assessment will capture to get to that place to make sure we save property, life, and limb for our residents of the county. Our current assessment was implemented in 2009. We brought a consultant in at that point who kind of developed the methodology of what we're using today, and we recommended to the board that we continue to use that same methodology if we could. In 2009, the board also made a decision that we should spend down our reserves to cover capital and infrastructure costs. The next slide, you'll see where we are today based on those decisions that we had back in 2009. Finally, about a year ago, I got to sit right here in the seat and talk about a fire assessment. And at that time, we didn't know about COVID, and we briefed the board, as my boss had said earlier, and we had board direction to accelerate the 2018 fire assessment, which we were very excited about. But also, at that time, we talked about that we would need to come back in another year and present the board a seven-year look at the Fire Department of where we would need to be for seven years out, and present a tiered approach for personnel, capital, infrastructure reserves for board consideration on where we'd like to take your department. So, next slide, please. So, as we talked about a little bit earlier, this is our current reserves that we have in the Fire Department. You see, in 2009, the board decision was to make to spend those dollars down to buy capital infrastructure. Those were one-year costs, non-reoccurring costs. So, we've been spending those down judiciously up until about 2019. And in 2019, when we got down to about a little over, a little less than $1 million, right around $1,700,000, $1,800,000, we realized that also those reserves are there for any type of natural disaster that happens. We need those funds if a hurricane or wildfire happens to front-load the emergency in times of, to pay our employees and get the equipment that might be damaged. The fee for reimbursements sometimes come back a year, two years, three years, four years later. Those reserves are very critical for us to make sure we can respond to those natural disasters. Next slide. This is just a reminder of the resource divide that we have in the Fire Department. There's two main funding sources and two main buckets of money that we have. We have EMS Ops, which is the blue-colored slide, and then we have Fire Operations. You'll see the FA is the fire assessment, and is a main component of the Fire Operations budget dollars. That is, that makes up about 35% of our total budget. Thus, the infusion of those dollars are extremely critical for us corporately as we look across the department. More importantly also, the shared costs that you see in the purple box down there are costs that are shared both on the EMS side and the Fire Operations side. In general, shared cost is about 60% Fire Operations or Fire Assessment dollars and about 40% of EMS dollars. Those are general fund and EMS reimbursables. Next slide, please. So, fire assessment goals. What did we want to look at when we develop the strategy of a fire assessment? The fire assessment really has two main components in it, a personnel component and a capital infrastructure and reserve component. We set up the tiered approach to this, that every tier on the personnel side would address retention, recruiting, overtime, and future capacity, because again, we wanted that seven-year look out from today, seven years in advance. What would Brevard County look like, and what would the Fire Department need to look like to respond? Also, from a capital infrastructure and reserve component and that kind of focus, what investments do we need to make in capital to ensure safe delivery of those capabilities? How do we address aging infrastructure? And how do we build up our reserve just a little bit so make sure we can reduce that risk that we talked about a few seconds ago? So, next slide, and this is kind of where we, is the money slide. In our approach of what we're recommending to the board on a tiered look across a fire assessment, there are, again, the two main components, which is personnel, and then on the right side, capital, infrastructure, and reserve. From the personnel side, there's three elements that we have in each tier that make up that personnel tier. The first is, how do we address overtime? Each tier represents or has a component of it that would address overtime. It also has a second component, which is how do we address the future capacity of wherever Brevard County will be in the next seven years? The final component would be the salary component, and that's kind of where the tier moves. And the tiers go from a graduating scale up from tier one to tier four. The salary components are the ones that we would have the discussion at. Tier one moves the entry level fire medic and fire EMT to those identified comps. Tier two closes the gaps on those comps. Tier three gets us to those levels in year one, and then tier four gets us to that optimum level of competitive competition. From a capital infrastructure and reserve standpoint, tier one gets us to meet those standards, those recommended standards from NAFTA, all the way to tier four, where it gets us to an optimum replacement plan for our capital infrastructure and reserves. And we're going to come back to this slide at the very end of the presentation for your reference, as we, hopefully, we have that discussion. Okay, next slide. We're going to take a little bit of a deep dive now into the two components, the capital infrastructure reserve and personnel, about what is characteristics in each tier. On the personnel tiers, these characteristics are resident in each tier, tier one, tier two, tier three, and tier four. We move salaries competitive with competing organizations. We have the ability to add floaters that, I'm sorry, that has the ability to reduce overtime. And it also identifies new crews that are going to be needed over the next seven years for the county. And those stations are 49, 42, 27, and 90, all the way from Viera to Palm Bay. It also addresses our hazmat capability to increase that a little bit as we see that we need that in the field. Next slide is we dive down a little bit deeper into capital and the tiers of what the tiers would purchase from a capital perspective. Tier one on the far left, tier four on the far right. This is what we would recommend, or kind of what our plan would be over the next seven years, and this is in addition to what our current investment is, I would like to point out, to make sure that we are robust enough and that we have the capability that we need to put to the field to make sure we put those fires out at each residence in Brevard County. The bottom side of the slide addresses the EMS capital, again, what we talked about, the blue money. Again, a seven-year look about what capital requirements we would need to make sure that we respond to those medical emergencies across the county. Our next slide is a little bit deeper dive look into infrastructure and reserve. This would be our seven-year look about what infrastructures we would be rebuilding, replacing, moving to make them more efficiently located or more efficiently being able to provide the capability in Brevard County. These type of moves affect our ISO rating that we have across the county, which then in turn affects our insurance rates for our citizens. At the bottom portion of this, again, is the EMS infrastructure look, again, the general fund or the EMS dollars that we would have for that. Finally, at the very bottom, is our addressing for reserves. This is in addition to the 1.1, the 1.2 million that we already have currently in reserves. So, it's that number plus 1.2, 1.3. Next slide. As we kind of get closer to wrapping this up, this is how we kind of see where we need to go forward from our, from a fire assessment perspective. We want to be in lockstep alignment with the board discussion and direction. We want to be able to be in a position where we can retain a quality workforce and recruit a quality workforce. We absolutely want to address overtime issues and make sure that we are putting the right dollars at the right place at the right time. We want to position BCFR to meet those future population requirements and have those strategic objectives to be met in the future as we look to what we're trying to get to. And then the investments in capital and also the addressing of the reserves. Next slide. This is my last slide, and this is the slide I'm going to leave you with, Commissioner. This is for your reference as we hopefully generate a little bit of discussion. Our goal coming out of the discussion from the board would be for the board to let us know you like a tier X personnel and then a tier Y type of capital look. If we can get that, then the way ahead would be, we would set this up at a commission meeting in March, that the board would have two decisions to make. One would be to approve the notices that would go out to those, that would be part of the fire assessment. And then, two, would be to set up the public hearing for an April commission meeting where we'd have final approval of the fire assessment. It's also worth noting that we really would like to have this done and in place before the June break, so it can affect our FY '22 budget. If the timelines associated with the amount of work and the lead times that we need, we really have to have this, if all possible, before that June break, so we can make the effect and change. That's my last slide. That's all I've got, and I will step away from the mic pending your questions, answers, concerns, or anything I can do for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm getting kind of hot, so I'm going to take the overshirt off if you all don't mind. I think the county commission, a few thoughts as well. I think the county commission and the fire union really ought to, and we probably do share a number of common goals, and the fact is, as a result, we really ought to be on the same team. I think we are on the same team with respect to most of the issues. Now, in my opinion, there are a few issues, and if you just bear with me a couple of minutes and let me kind of go over some thoughts on this, I'd certainly appreciate it. I think that having exceptional employees, to me, and I'm going to take this off, the beginning one's within six feet, having exceptional employees, to me, is far more important than having exceptional facilities or equipment. Not to say that we should be substandard in those. For instance, Colonel, I would trust you with a high point over someone that's never shot or someone that just got out of their first gun class to get their concealed permit with a nice custom Wilson Combat. The fact is as well, I think that we need to recruit not just exceptional talent, but exceptional local talent, which will help with retaining them, as will paying them a competitive wage with efforts made, as I know the administration is looking to make, to reduce mandatory overtime. You talked about floaters. I think that's excellent. We need with respect to facilities to have standard, but not over-the-top facilities. I can just tell you that from my perspective, I don't want to be the guy, I don't want, I don't want, let's say, my 94-year-old grandmother has an MI or has a stroke, God forbid. I don't want the guy or the gal who responds to be miserable in their job, looking for any opportunity to leave as soon as an opening arises anywhere in the state. I want to have someone, not that's necessarily raking in gold or platinum, but I want them to be comfortable. I don't want them to have to worry about how they're going to put trucks on their, tires on their truck, pardon me. I think there's some goals that, you know, as I alluded to before, that we have in common or we should have in common with the union. Now, some of this is going to be more CMO and HR and brass-based than it is union-based. But, you know, as I mentioned, we need to look very heavily at recruiting locally. The fact is, if we have someone that's a tenth of a point lower in qualifications but still well-qualified, if they're local, they're less likely to leave. We need to get floaters hired as quickly as possible, regardless of which way this goes, to help with the overtime issues. And having sat down with you, and I'm sorry for having kept you up, and Chief, same thing, and Mr. Abate, same, I know we've spent hours going over this. I would like to see ideally no less than 36 floaters hired, and whether they're immediately or in short order made into fire medics, that's what I'd like to see. I think that will help tremendously in the overtime, the mandatory overtime issues. We really need to as well focus whatever additional monies you get here on funding most heavily those positions that have the greatest attrition, so years zero to 10 in particular. Not to say that you don't or shouldn't put some of the funds toward the more senior individuals. I think you have to, to keep those gaps from being overly compressed, where really there's a negative incentive to succeed and to move up. I really would like to see as well, and I think with some of the options that are available here, there's no reason it can't happen, based on our conversations as well, to have the fire medic twos at a starting wage with that fire medic two status at the first step, whatever step that may be for them, whether that's compressed or left alone or expanded, at $50,000 within three years of when this is approved. Maybe some of this falls a little more on the union, but I really, this is not just a Santa Claus gesture on the part of the commission, assuming anyone backs me on this. We need to have some return on this. You know, part of it obviously is going to be the reduced attrition, but we need to push whatever unavoidable overtime remains down the ladder. There's absolutely no reason for us to have district chiefs and folks that are beyond overqualified responding to simple calls for service. If we have, let's say, an FM2 that's able to respond to a call for service, I would far rather pay that individual overtime if it's absolutely unavoidable than pay someone who's making a multiple of that salary in overtime. I think that, you know, there needs to be some method of discouraging that officially, unofficially, or perhaps both. You know, there's no reason, Chief, to have you responding on a call for service on overtime. Again, I'm not saying there's not some extenuating circumstance where that may be justified, but I would think not nine out of 10, but probably 99 out of 100 or better, there's just no need. From my perspective, again, based on the concerns that I have and the conversations that we've had over a period of hours and, you know, longer than I'm sure you'd care to admit, I've probably spent more time with you than my wife in the recent past. She is prettier.
Time was fair.
She is prettier.
No doubt.
But you are a handsome man, Colonel.
Thank you.
Now, that said, where I would be comfortable, I don't think we need to go crazy with respect to the capital. I think the first tier that you all have identified will get us where we need to be. Certainly, from my perspective in my district with East Merritt Island getting a fire station, I think that is an appropriate tier from my perspective that I would support. I would say as well with respect to that, anything that runs under, and maybe it'll happen, maybe we'll luck out, if you don't spend everything, I would squirrel away everything we reasonably can for personnel purposes if we don't spend what we anticipate having to spend on capital. On the personnel side, I would be comfortable going as high as tier three. I can tell you, that's where I'm at. I really think tier one is the absolute bare minimum that we should be doing, given where the comps are, and given that you don't want someone who's actively looking to leave and who's miserable, who may not even want to be on the apparatus they're on, coming and responding to a call for service. I don't know where others are, but I'll just throw it out there again. I'm tier one for the infrastructure, so on the low side but still an increase. And on the personnel side, I'm happy to do anything up to tier three, but I think we have a real obligation to, at a absolute dead minimum, take one of these tiers or go somewhere in between one and three.
Thank you, sir. As far as, do you have the numbers on how much the fire assessment would have to be? I'm going to start with tier one. For the, you call them tiers, I'm going to say options because you have that, sir? Okay. Can you give me the number for the average home of the increase of fire assessment and then as well for general fund?
Okay. I did think that was the question you were asking. We do have that number. We can give you what the average one would be.
Okay.
I can address the issue, and I want to make sure I address it so the board understands that in the discussion as you move it forward. Tier one and the percentage increase that we would have to come back, we've already done the calculations on this, so we know where that would be approximately. It's going to be in the area plus or minus a little because we have to go back and finalize. It's going to be in the area of a 30% increase of the current fire assessment. That's where tier one would be.
Just about three or four dollars per average house?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry?
It's, he has that. Yes, he does.
Okay.
Why don't you give that to her, and then I'll continue. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. So, ma'am, to answer your question, were you asking tier one personnel or tier one capital?
I'm going to ask you both.
Tier one personnel and capital. So, tier one personnel would be about a 20%, 20.7% increase on the current fire assessment, which would equate to about $3.39 more a month for the assessors. A capital infrastructure reserve tier one is about a 10.16 increase, which is about a $1.66 a month increase for the assessors.
Okay. So, that's about $5 per average house per month?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, what about the, I know that's only a percentage of these increases. How much is the percent? I think I saw a 40 and a 60% delta.
So, if you're talking about like tier four?
Well, no, tier one, because that's the fire assessment. There's still going to have to be money for general fund to try to make tier one.
Oh, yes, ma'am. It is a, it's about a 60% fire assessment number, a 40% general fund or EMS revenue on the blue side.
Okay. All right. So, then that would be, oh, my gosh, I'm going to try this math right now.
So, we have it for personnel, for tier one on the EMS side? Yep. Our boss, I'll defer to you on how you want to go here.
Why don't you give me the question, Commissioner?
We just got the impact for the fire assessment, but in all reality, you got to add the general fund because both of them are going to have to make up tier one. So, what's the cost in general fund then?
The cost in the general fund, if we were to do everything under tier one, it's going to come in, we'd have to identify somewhere in the area of $1.9 million.
$1.9 million? Okay. Commissioner Loeb, I love how much you care about our firefighters. I do, too. That's why I'm willing to do a fire assessment or something as well. I think we got to find something we can afford and still give them a great impact. I think with the discussion, we need to focus on these ones that are leaving. So, even as we did this, my recommendation would be that all those that are making at least $100,000 in total comp per year, that they wouldn't necessarily get this increases, but they'd probably get in the COLA. But all of those ones that are, we're having the hard time keeping in these positions, I think we need to try to get them up to that $50,000 a year level here is, you know, when we can.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think number one does that. It gives you time to work with the unions so that they can work on those, work those levels up, because I think those are the ones, the guys that are leaving all the time, because these upper-level guys aren't leaving. They've been here a while, from what I've seen. So, and not that they're not valuable, but I think we need to really start pouring some of these funds into those other ones, because when I saw the comparisons of the other counties, we're really not as competitive in those. So, that would be my recommendation, that we do the tier one, and I would go ahead and agree to the fire assessment and the general fund numbers to get these guys money up as well. And it's not cheap. It's still pretty expensive, but I would do that. I looked through the numbers, I believe, for the other tiers. Commissioner Loeb, I did the math on it. I don't think we're going to, we could really afford it. And not only that, you do tier three and tier four, we're going to be hearing from the sheriff, because he's going to start getting analysis of these numbers as well. So, I would be willing to do tier one.
Madam Chair, do you mean with respect to both the capital and personnel?
Yes, sir. I do need the capital as well. Other Commissioners? Ms. Zaka?
I would just say, if you have the majority that are willing to even consider this, which I think, you know, it's pretty obvious you do, I would like to see the numbers. I don't want to have to ask you, okay, what does tier two mean for personnel? I want to see it on paper. I want the public to see it. I want all of that stuff very transparent, so it's pretty clear on what we need to do, because I think we all need, we all know we need to do something. We just need to know the impacts on the general fund and on the average, on the low and high average to the homeowner, because not everybody has a, you know, the average-cost house. So, I want to see that, and I want it pretty clear. And it's probably going to take, you know, workshop, the magic word, right?
No, I don't think so. I think we have it, and we will be able to present.
What I'm saying is-
We've been working, we have the numbers. We've tried to brief around, and we've, we've got the information, I think, that you'll want to see.
I'm not saying the workshop is for you guys, or even necessarily for us, but for the public. I think they need to know those impacts. I think those numbers need to be out there.
We'll have it at a, we were going to have, what we were hoping to do, unless you want to do different, Commissioner, what we're hoping to do is take where you want us to go relative to this and bring it back for the public hearing, where we will provide all that information for you.
Okay, then I would like, I would like to see all the numbers then, at that public hearing. Not just tier one, not just tiers three or four. I would like to see them all. I mean, so the public can see them. See what those impacts are.
You're talking about what the fire assessment rates would be?
Yes. Well, what the impacts of the general fund would be based on the tiers, because we have two commissioners that are tier one and tier three now, so they're pretty far apart. So I'd like to see all those numbers, if possible.
We'll have those numbers for you.
Yeah. No, I know you have the numbers. I want the public to have the numbers, so they can at least offer their input.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Wallace, in tier one, it says move entry level fire medics, fire EMTs to identifiable comps. That's fire medic two, is that correct?
It's, yes, sir. That's part of the overall, we were looking at them corporately.
And we might have touched upon this, but this was the one that gets them into the low to mid 40s to that magic $50,000 mark, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which is roughly a 15 or a 16% increase over the next, whatever, three years or something in that nature. Is that roughly correct?
From their current salary?
Correct.
You're gonna make me do math in public.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Do you got Alabama?
So the question, and that's only one of the numerous ranks. My question is very simple. All the other ranks, and I don't know what those ranks are, but would they receive a similar bump or would that be substantially different from the ones that are allegedly have such high attrition rates that may or may not be higher than attrition rates in other departments that the county has?
Yes, sir. Do you want me to take that? I, go ahead.
You know, the dilemma, Commissioner, is are we talking about what the pay plans will be looking like? Because we're not really, you know, we're not presenting a pay plan to move forward. What we're trying to give the board is a concept of what we, what we're gonna try to accomplish, what you want us to accomplish in the area of addressing attrition through salaries and the areas where we have the highest attrition. But we're not negotiating, meaning saying, this is where we're going to go during the negotiations. That's something we hope to do, you know, at the table and then bring back to the board if we don't come to an agreement. And I think that's the appropriate way for us to move forward.
Yeah, I'm just having trouble separating the two. Here we're talking about assessment, which is a revenue driver that, my understanding, will go directly to that compensation. In fact, this deals directly with addressing comps, which is directly linked to pay. Explain to me, how do I separate these as a policymaker?
The challenge, Commissioner, that we're facing is if we do not have the board take action that gives us the opportunity to bring back a revised assessment under a format where we can move things forward, we won't be able to negotiate any changes in salaries, et cetera, for the new year. We have to get that done by June. Unfortunately, the assessment has to go and be completed in a manner that we can send out notices to the public, bring it back for a public hearing. And to do that timeframe, we have, that's why Colonel Wallace mentioned that, we have to get it back to the board before June. We will then, that is coupled with the challenge that since 40% of the costs in fire rescue come from not the fire side of the house, but come from the EMS and the advanced life support side of the house for ambulances, et cetera, we would then have to fund whatever we're planning to do on the fire assessment side, these comparables that we want to reach through a negotiated process with the union, we're gonna have to fund it on the general fund side. We're not with anything that we're doing here today and asking for these resources. We're doing it so that over the next seven-year period, we can reach this goal of trying to become comparable and reducing the attrition. We're not giving you specific numbers, and we won't have specific numbers, say, this is where the salary will be, et cetera. That's a negotiation process that we have undertaken and we're working with the union right now, but we don't have where those numbers are gonna go. That's something that we have to move forward, and quite honestly, that's a responsibility that I have to make those decisions as to where we, as a leadership team, are going to try to negotiate. And if we're not successful in doing with that with the union, then it comes to the board. If we get the board to, if we get the union to agree that we're at a good place, and I've heard a couple of commissioners say that they want us to be aligned with where the union is gonna be, if we don't get to that place, then you're gonna have the full ability to make a decision after public hearings as to what's gonna be imposed by the board. So you will ultimately make those decisions. We're in a rather difficult position here today because we know that we can't move toward what we've heard the board tell us you want to do until we get the fire assessment issue resolved. Once we get that resolved, where we go with the general fund, there's no guarantee what's gonna happen with the contract negotiation, because we still have to come to the board for what we're gonna deal on the general fund side. And as Commissioner Zanka mentioned, we've got the cap to deal with, we've got what the board history has been and what the board is gonna ask us to do relative to the general fund. And then beyond that, what are the charter officers, through Jill's presentation, how much of that budget they currently take and what they're gonna need moving forward? We don't have that information yet, but we're committed to achieving what the board tells us to do relative to a starting point being the fire assessment. And unfortunately, that's the best answer that I can give you. I can't really give you more specifics as to what's gonna happen with those numbers, because we haven't negotiated that yet and we haven't dealt with that. We know what we generally think, if you give us this pot of money, where our goals are gonna be over the next seven years to accomplish what we're talking about today, but I can't give you the specific numbers because they're just scenarios that we're working with.
Madam Chair, thank you, Frank. It sounds like you're here looking for general parameters-
That's right.
-that would allow and to move forward. So, and everyone's delineated these based on the tiers that you artificially set up. So let me list one that's not here. I'm not willing to vote for a fire assessment that eventually will cause a pay increase more than the bulk of, or the average pay increase of the county employee who has decided not to join a union. So should a fire assessment gain enough revenue to provide a pay gain higher than whatever we give our rank and file, who have decided to let their merit and their work determine their pay, not a artificial union? I can't support whether it's tier one, tier two, tier three, or tier four. But in all honesty, if tier four is a pay that's commensurate to what we give our average citizen, or, sorry, our average county employee, that would be something that I wouldn't have any trouble supporting. I don't think those numbers would, I don't think that's any figment of reality. I don't think that's even a figment of reality of tier one. But that's what I'm more concerned about, not the minority of citizens or minority of workers that have decided to join a union. I'm more concerned about the $15 pay increase out there and the compression that that may cause on the thousands or almost a couple thousand folks that have decided not to join a union. And I understand that that's extremely complicated, certainly given a CPI of whatever that was, 1.234, but I don't know where that falls in your tier one, two, three, or four, but if it falls in there, great, and if it doesn't, I couldn't support a fire assessment fee that would provide a unique benefit to a union.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've looked at these numbers and I come at it a little bit differently than Commissioner Tobias. In deference to the union people that are friends and relatives, I'm not a big union person in general, but when you're talking specifics about firefighters, they're a little bit different than somebody that just shows up for work Monday through Friday and works their eight or nine hours a day in doing their chores. These men and women are putting their own lives at risk 24 hours a day to keep our people safe. So I think the parameter is a little different for them. Personally, I would support a tier two for personnel and tier one for capacity.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Abate, is there a difference in the pay that we give the firefighters that are in the union and not in the union as we make these changes? Would they be paid the same?
No, they, everyone in the bargaining unit would be treated, in the same classification would be treated the same way, whether or not you're a union member.
Okay, so if somebody wasn't a union member, they would still be, their pay would be risen the same way that we're hoping to raise these guys that are not getting enough money? I'm sorry, I just, I got a little confused with that.
He was speaking about everyone who's not in a bargaining unit should be treated the same.
For the firefighters, right.
Yeah, and we're not in a position to do that. You know, even under tier one, quite honestly, it's not. Tier one, there's no way, if we make the adjustments to tier one, we would not be able to do that throughout the organization. Resources would not be there.
So if we raised an EMT by this, up to 50, we wouldn't raise the guy who's not in the union up to 50?
No, I believe he's speaking about-
Madam Chair?
Thank you, I need some education.
Yeah, no, I, it would be across the board, is my understanding.
Okay.
I wasn't referring to the non-unionized firefighters.
All right.
I was referring to the thousands of folks-
County employees.
County employees-
Okay.
...that provide services, that, quite frankly, if you speak to Mr. Visco, you'll find that attrition rates are just as high in other areas. So I find it very difficult as a conservative to say a liberal union, by the way, Commissioner Smith, that endorsed Biden over Trump, provide a 20 or 25% pay increase, but the folks that have decided to let their, again, their merit, their hard work dictate their pay, to provide a COLA of 2%, I think it's very, very difficult. And that's something Frank has to do, is look at these folks and say, hey, guys, you know, even though fire is gonna get eight to 10 times the amount of pay increase that you're going to get, all the board is authorized, you know, is a CPI of whatever, 1.234. I just, I can't, I cannot do that.
That's true to you as well always with what you think. I have really got to learn not to laugh at your jokes. It gets me in trouble here lately. It's okay. Just, yes, sir, just a real quick thing on this. So I think, sir, you're gonna need to see the same number breakout that Commissioner Zanka asked for. I think you guys, that'll help you a lot with that tool. It helped me a lot, so.
And the attrition, Madam Chair, and the attrition members, if that's okay?
Yes, sir, I agree with you completely.
Maybe we could compare to other departments, IT, road and bridge, all those other ones, if that would be fair, and see if really is marked different.
Okay, Commissioner Loeb and then Commissioner Zanka? You want us to, okay.
A few thoughts just based on the discussion we've had so far. So first, respectfully, Commissioner Tobias, the attrition is not the same when you look at the newer employees. The attrition across the organization is not what the issue is. It's the attrition in certain classes of employees. Those folks that are there zero to five years, they bleed them. The folks that are there up to 10 years, they still bleed them to a large degree. When you start factoring in the folks that have been there 20-plus years, yeah, it changes the dynamic, but that's not the folks that we're really looking at focusing this additional funding toward. What I would suggest, and I know that Frank, Colonel and Chief have the numbers already, Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Zanka, when you meet with them, you may want to get, because they have them, the comps up and down the ladder. So for everyone from a base-level firefighter EMT all the way up to district chiefs, they've got them for the comps. I will tell you, just kind of as a quick, rough, dirty math way of doing it, they also have the numbers for how many BCFR employees we have in those respective positions. If you want to pick an area where you're comfortable, maybe average the comps, pick a comp that you think is really a competitor more so than another for us, maybe factoring in which comps do EMS and which don't. You can take a look, multiply the number of employees by whatever comp you want to figure out how much money we need to come up with, tack those all together in aggregate at the end, look at what we've got and the difference between what we need to get, and that gives you a better opportunity to do that. I respect the fact that the county manager staff doesn't want to box themselves in with respect to union negotiations, because despite our intentions, at this point, there may be different priorities. I will tell you, you know, if this doesn't focus on the, or result in the core issues as far as that zero to 10-year attrition, I don't know that I would support it. I mean, anything that leaves us with underpaid zero to 10-year employees is just a nonstarter for me. And lastly, and I'm sorry to even get into it, but I don't know that the local fire union, at least here in Brevard, made any statement with respect to the presidential election that we recently had. I see someone shaking their head in the audience, and I have no reason to disbelieve that. So, you know, I agree with Commissioner Smith. I'm not generally a union lover by any means, but, you know, once in a blue moon, you will come across one like this one that exists for a very, very clear reason, because their membership isn't getting what they ought to be getting. This is not a group of folks that are trying to trade in their older Maseratis for a new Ferrari. These are folks that are having problems meeting their bottom line at the end of the day. Now, there are definitely exceptions to that, I'm not gonna tell you otherwise, but the only way that I've seen that people make good money in the BCFR service here is either by staying for decades, getting underpaid for a huge chunk of that time, or alternatively, working a disgusting number of hours in overtime. You know, if someone wants to work 120 hours a week, they should be making a heck of a lot of money. But for the folks that are working 40, 50 hours a week, the wages just aren't there. So we need to get competitive. I've never said we need to be the absolute number-one payer for firefighters or for anyone. I think part of that goes back to hiring locally, where they're gonna remain here if you pay them a competitive, not, you know, gold-plated or platinum-plated wage, but pay them a very competitive wage. But looking up and down the tier is, tier four, I mean, the way that I've viewed it, having crunched the numbers, or at least gotten the benefit of having had the numbers crunched for me more accurately, and thank you, Chief, Colonel, and Mr. Abate, tier four is basically, you know, that would be an attractor, a beacon of light for all firefighters anywhere remotely near us, where they would, you know, they would want to come here basically as a destination because our pay is so, you know, so solid in comparison to other areas. Now, the other tiers don't do that, but they get us, all of them get us far more competitive. I think tier three, where I mentioned I was fine supporting up to before, I think that's a great way of going it. Commissioner Smith said he's happy with tier two. Our chair said tier one. You know, frankly, Chair, I would be happy to meet in the middle if you have a level of comfort in that. I'm not trying to twist your arm.
I, well, I want to hear from Commissioner Zanka still, but I got to see all those numbers real well, and tier one pulls off the objective of the ones that are leaving, getting their pay caught up. When we start getting to tier four, that's the upper level, those guys make it $180,000 a year, $100,000 a year, they're also gonna get this increase. I don't think we should do that, they're not leaving and there's not a competition issue.
I agree.
So we are trying to get that lower group, and tier one does that over a time period that's a little bit more affordable. This is still tough to do. I mean, it's gonna bite because of all the things we're having to deal with, but I would be agreeable, I would be agreeable to tier one doing the fire assessment and the general fund, because I do think we need to get them up to that competitive level. But again, it's that bottom level down there, as we've been making these increases, the money's been going to the upper level and it should have been going to the bottom, because those are the little fellows leaving. I guess they're kind of big fellows. But I think this is the way we fix it, because somehow this has gotten really out of balance, and I think we need to get these earlier-on firefighters, you know, with some more money so they can take care of their families. But I'm not in favor of giving the upper-level guys more funds at this time, except with the COLAs, because I think they've somehow gotten proportionately out of the market here. It might be the market everywhere, but I don't, I'm not sure this is a good thing we have going on nationwide. I don't know. Not that they're not valuable, they are, but I'm not real sure a brain surgeon gets that right now. But I think we do need to focus on these other guys down there, and there's lots of them, that we need to get their pay increased. And that's why, when I asked about tier one, it did meet all of those objectives, and it's still painful, but I think I would be willing to do that, to get those levels up. Commissioner Zanka, I'm sorry, that was your turn and-
And the more everybody talks, the more questions or the things that do get answered or remarked upon. You know, I'm happy with tier two or tier three. I think that a lot of that overtime, addressing the overtime issues, especially the mandatory overtime, will take care of a lot of those over $100,000-type guys, because whether or not some choose to, because it's their top five, work that extra time to increase, they're still working those hours. So if we're addressing some of the staffing issues and that, overtime's not gonna be there. And as far as unions go, I mean, this union was, this predates probably all of us in this room, I'm sure. And I can honestly say, and I've been a part of government for a while, this union that we have in place right now, they're a good union. I think that they're trying to be good advocates for their staff without being a bunch of bullies, without being a bunch of, you know, hot heads that make big demands, that they're a good group of guys that are just looking out for each other. And you can't compare the average county employee to the average firefighter. That's just not a fair assessment. It's not a fair assessment even at all. Not to say one has more value, because each has a very unique set job description. I think it's impossible and unfair, because I'd be happy, you know, being in the healthcare field myself, to defend what they do and, God forbid, the risks that they put themselves at, not just with- themselves at, not just with fires, but the health risks. I mean, look at this COVID nightmare that they've had to endure. And they, they go home to small children and, and newborns and everything else, and we don't think about that kind of stuff. So I think, again, I, it's not about trying to fix all the things that weren't done correctly in the past, but it's about trying to get them to a fair wage, trying to make sure that we're taking care of our staff the best way that we can. We can eliminate the union, whether you love unions or not, and I've had my share of ones that I've not been fond of. But I think that this one, at the very least, they're, they're a good group of guys, and they're trying to do the right thing. So I, I think with the capital, makes me a little nervous neglecting that, only because we've got some issues with mold, we've got some issues with, you know, one place didn't have hot water for a few weeks, and, you know, it just didn't get brought up to the right person, but that kind of stuff, some of them are crowded, so these are people that have to stay there for 24 hours. So I want to make sure, at the very least, the place that they have to put their head down for the 30 minutes or an hour where they actually get to sleep, that they can sleep in a comfortable place, and that it's not a horrible place to be for 24 or more hours. So I know, and we need new fire trucks, we need new everything, but.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Okay, I, I'll go ahead and make a motion, and I, I just want to preface it real quick. Commissioner Zonka, I did speak with staff, and if I'm misspeaking or if I misunderstood, please, any of you all jump in and correct me. Even the first tier for capital would address those concerns that, that you just mentioned as far as mold and things of that nature. Am I, am I not correct, Colonel?
You're correct, yes, sir.
Okay. So I, I would, I would move, based on what I've heard from Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Zonka in particular, to direct staff to go about what they need to in pursuing tier two on the personnel side and tier one on the capital side?
I'll second that.
My motion and a second, any more discussion?
Yeah, I, I would, I would like to see at least tier two on both. I'd be happy to support it.
Okay.
And we can always, you can always show us both on the capital end if you want, but-
Yep.
And I'd like to see the difference between tier two and tier three as far as cost goes. The reason, the numbers, I know what the numbers mean for the guys, I think we've all been through those numbers. I'm talking about what the numbers mean to the average homeowner.
Yeah.
Because that's ultimately the decision we're making.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll withdraw the motion then for the moment.
Okay, and, and you know, when you start this in base year one and they keep increasing, this is increasing cost with FRS and all these numbers as well. Did you want to change your motion, sir? And if you did, I need to know if there's a second on the change.
I'll, you know, I'll leave it unless Commissioner Zonka, if you want to make it in a way that's more preferable, you know, certainly if it, if it gets us to a better place, I'd be inclined to support it, but-
Is that doable to bring us both back tier two and tier three?
You want tier two, and you said tier-
No, tier, well, I'd like to see what the difference is on the personnel between two, tier two and tier three. Like, I don't, I don't want to take three off the table if, if it's a minor difference, because if we can do better and, and be competitive and not lose these guys to these municipalities, because another factor that people don't consider either is that these municipalities don't transport. I know, we all know this in this room, but our guys, again-
Right, most people don't.
They're, they're in a very unique position that it's difficult to compare to municipalities, and their municipal pensions are just quite outrageous, actually, compared to what FRS offers. So it is hard to keep these guys, and I just, I want to make sure we're doing the right thing by them.
I think you're going to have to come back to the, I just think we're going to have to come to the commission with what these three op, we're just going to have to talk about it, what these three options are, because when you guys explained this to me and you told me the difference, if, if we moved up to those up two options, we lose the ability to get the money down to the lower-ranked guys. I think, I think we're going to have to have a better discussion with this, in my opinion. We go ahead and, and do this right now, but I, I think you're getting the overall, for sure, the view on it, that we're willing to do an assessment and, and work with the general fund, but I just don't think that we've been given enough data here with all the members to, to really-
I'll rescind my second. I assume you'll rescind yours.
Yeah, the motion's already off the table, sir.
And so, in deference to getting these numbers, so that everybody's working on from the same page.
And realistically, it can, it can be a discussion even at the next commission meeting, because this is amongst the board. If we tell you to bring it back for, you know, an ultimate vote at the following meeting, it will be ready for March, like your plan.
I, I think you know by now, Mr. Abate, that we're all going to be in favor of an assessment, except for Commissioner Tavaya, and maybe some adjustments with the general fund. Am I right in assuming that, Commissioner?
Yeah, the general fund dialogue is a, is a separate dialogue.
Yeah.
And, and that's part of the challenge that we, you know, you're, you're all going to face. We can show, we have the numbers today to tell you what the difference in the fire assessment would be between tier two and tier three, which I think is what Commissioner Zonka is asking for.
Yes.
Yeah, we have those numbers. I can give them to you right now, if you wanted them.
Are you just wanting today to know if we're going to agree to you doing an assessment? Is that what you're looking for?
What I was looking for was, we wanted to be able to come back and, and, and like I indicated, we wanted to be able to know, should we be coming back with a proposal and, and a package that allows us to accomplish the items that are presented there in, in those various tiers, whichever ones you were going to be most comfortable with?
Well, from-
So that we would give you the specific numbers. We, we know what those specific numbers are, and they may need a little bit of tweaking, but we've got them. I would tell you, everything that Commissioner Lober said, which is making a little bit of a challenge for us, or at least for me as I'm listening, everything Commissioner Lober said at the very beginning, that's all accomplished in tier one. Everything he said would have been accomplished in tier one, and we have the documentation, and we can share that with you, we would do that. So when we're talking about tier three, in our tier three, the things that you were talking about is going to go beyond everything you were talking about, and it would be happening immediately. Now, I can give you what the relative cost of that would be. Tier one is going to be close to 31%. If we went to tier three, that would be close to 39% increase in, in the rates. That's what the difference would be.
Can I give you the actual dollars?
I, yeah, I think we're going to have to do that, but-
Yeah, I can give you the actual dollars too, I have that too.
Mr. Abate, I think what we're going to have to is come back, and I, I think I'm hearing tier one and tier two, but I don't know that Commissioner Zonka wouldn't convince him into tier three as well. So I think we're going to need that, that data, so that if you guys wouldn't mind, so that the commission at the next meeting, I'm, I'm in for tier one, but I, I don't know where everybody else is going to land after, after they see that. But again, we've only got one tier three, but she's pretty persuasive sometimes. I think you need to have that ready as well. But you guys, please make your motion as you'd like it, but that was just kind of my overview, unless you have another thought.
I guess I'll, I'll defer to, gosh, Commissioner Abate. Mr. Abate, County Manager Abate, what, what do you need at this point to get you in a position to, to have what's being asked for at the next commission meeting? Do you need a specific motion, or has the direction that you've received been sufficient at this point?
No, I, I think, I think we have the information. We will, we will, between now and the commission meeting, we will make sure you have that specific information, and then we'll ask the board to, to give us the direction of where to prepare to come back for the fire assessment.
We can build those specific packages with those costs and those percentages into that package for the board meeting. So the open discussion will happen between the board, the public will see it, the whole nine yards.
That's wonderful.
Yes, so, I think what my boss was saying, we just, this was such a wide gap from tier four to tier one on capital infrastructure reserves and personnel, we just wanted y'all to focus this a little bit, so we could then bring that back to that commission meeting, have that open discussion in front of the public, have that open discussion in front of the board. You give us that direction you want to go, and then we could press forward.
Good start, is a good start today. Okay, so you're comfortable, County Manager?
Yeah, we're ready.
Oh, yes, certainly.
I have a question, and this is sort of related, but not-
Yes, ma'am.
Not related to this discussion necessarily, but have we moved the COVID funding over to our public safety accounts that, to reimburse personnel?
Yes, we, we're working on it, we're still closing out all of the CARES funds, but, but we have established the public safety fund.
I know we've established the fund, because we voted weeks ago, or months ago now, to do that, but are we going to expend those funds? I mean, can we move those money so they're not just sitting there?
Yeah, the board, yes, the board has the authority to do what it thinks is appropriate with those funds, and so the public safety funds are going to be available to, to be utilized. We believe the sheriff is going to be asking to utilize them for public safety, because two-thirds of, of the dollars, of those payroll dollars, were actually for, for his payroll expenses, so I'm sure that he'll be looking for that. But if you're talking about the public safety fund, they're going to be available. We, quite honestly, depending on what happens with the fire assessment and everything we're talking about today, those dollars are dedicated on the fire side for the general fund side, and we hope to be able to use them, if the board so chooses, for capital and infrastructure projects, because when you see the numbers on the general fund side, that 40%, there isn't the money there if we don't use those dollars.
Yeah.
So we're, we're hoping to use it there, Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir.
Mr. Abate, you ready to move to the next topic?
I don't know, does the board want to go right into the utilities? Okay, we, we're ready, and we have Eddie ready to make his presentation.
Okay, dear.
Hi, whenever you guys are ready, or?
Yes, sir.
Chair, should, should we begin, or should we?
Please.
Okay. Hello? So what I'm going to be presenting is a rate revenue sufficiency study that was performed with the cooperation of Raff Tellis, and present, we have Rob Ori and Terry Bavary, if there's any in-depth questions that come. Sorry, I'm just, okay. So a quick agenda overview is to basically talk about the scope and objectives that were performed as related to the rate revenue sufficiency study, discuss about a little bit of the history of the last rate increase that was approved in 2013, major changes that have occurred since 2013, and the findings of what was conducted under the revenue efficiency study. So brief scope and objective, we looked at the 2013 study, and since then, we've done the revenue comparisons, and we've looked at some sensitivity and utility dynamic changes that have occurred since. We talk about the septic-to-sewer, there's regular, regulatory changes that have come out since 2013, and updating of infrastructure assessments, which now seems to be a more prevalent requirement and level of service for utilities these days, due to some of the leaks and mishaps that have occurred over the years. We looked at industry rates and benchmarks, and along with recommendations. 2013, to give you a little bit, and coincidentally, Raff Tellis was also the rate consultant in 2013, but in that, in that, in 2013, there was a need for a rate increase, because prior to that, there was not a rate increase until 2008, and prior to then, in between 2008 and 2013, there was no indexing. And as a result, prior to 2013, for example, the utility CIP budget was $1 million for countywide in comparison to the 18 million that we have. So there was that need in 2013 to deal with what I call low-hanging fruit, which were obvious deficiencies in the current assets, or we refer to as RNR. So, and through there, there was a five-year rate implementation. So since 2013, a few things have happened. We're, we'll be talking about the septic-to-sewer, and yes, in the last go-around, which would have been last year, there was some rates that moved, funding that moved over to perform selective septic-to-sewer, which by the way, the RFQ for engineers is out for that effort right now. Assessments of renewal and replacement, we are now, at this point, have a very rigorous assessment program of all of our assets, whether it's a valve, an ARV, a forest main, or a gravity line, and the whole objective of that is, is to identify the unknowns or to lower the frequency of mishaps by doing such. We have completed the North Riverside Forest Main, but the North Riverside Forest Main is not the only project that's needed in order for the resiliency of the beaches. And again, that's all the driver from the last hurri, from Hurricane Irma and the discharging. June of last year, Florida passed 403.806, and in a nutshell, what it's basically saying is, there were particular bodies of water identified in Florida. The only one that was on the east coast was the Indian River Lagoon. All the other ones were in that Hillsboro, Pinellas, Manatee area. And in there, there is a requirement by July of 2025, that any plant that is adjacent to any of those lagoons be converted to an AWT for water quality purpose. And then we're talking about treatment capacity for the growth that we foresee in the county, and being able to service development as they come. We've talked about adopted index. In, in part of the due diligence that we did as part of this, we created a dynamic model, and it's a, it's a key component, and it's the basis of a lot of the information encompassed, which allows us to put a lot of information and matrix in order to come with the calculations. We've determined what the rate recommendations are, based on our current system, and also looking at what the major changes that we've discussed. So based on the criteria of what we talked about, of filling in the gap of what's changed from 2013 to 2020, as we talked about, and just to name a few, some future resiliency projects, additional funding for the septic-to-sewer program, the growth, and also the need for, you know, the, the, the other components, we're, we're looking at a cumulative of a $356 million program between now and fiscal year '29. Again, you know, we, we talk about, you know, some of the current, and that encompasses what our current five-year program is, and in addition with the ones that we are talking about as future. To give you a little, little bit of the lay of the land of how this associates as dollars of that 356 million that I presented, and how that falls within each of your district, we kind of gave a, a brief, a brief breakdown of that, so you guys can kind of see that, how the dollars would be allocated. So as we talk about CIP, but the important thing too is also to talk about operations and maintenance. And in addition, because of the growth within the county and the emphasis of doing more assessments and more due diligence, we're also anticipating new employees or a larger staff. And our current projections show us as needing an additional 31 new positions for, for operations. I showed on the board a little bit of the flavor of what we're doing in terms of preventative maintenance. There's more to it, but it's to give you an idea that all of that is for us to be in a preventative mode and not into a reactive mode, which actually pays, which works out to be cheaper for us to do that, rather than addressing it as they misoccur. So this is a reserve balance that shows that if we stay on the current program at the current rates with the current CPI index, and implement all of the projects identified through the 403 for the state, state resiliency, and all the other ones that weren't taken into account from the 22, or 2013 rate, that in year, in fiscal year '26, we'll be at zero. And then we'll run a deficit, which we can't, because as you know, departments have to submit a balanced budget in order to do, each year. So, and the black line shows what industry standard is, is we, departments, at least on utilities, like to maintain 120-day O&amp;M budget, which is basically the equivalent that if all funds were stopped coming in, we have 120 days to stay afloat during that period. Now, industry standard is starting to get more into three or four months. So I know I'm not the first, and I know I'm the last to talk about rate adjustments, but in doing so, we've, we've proposed some rate adjustments in order to bridge that gap. but in doing so, we've, we've proposed some rate adjustments in order to bridge that gap. The, you know, what you see is the recommendation, the percentage shows per year what we would propose. I do want to point out, so this is only for the countywide rate adjustment. So, this, this does not show Barefoot Bay and we'll talk more into it into the presentation. But the only, and again, these are not taxpayers, these are ratepayers. And not everyone in the county will be subjected to these. Similar, if you live in Melbourne, they already have their utility system and they have their own rates. But on the water bill, the only ones that these would fall under are MIMS. So, everyone else in our service area would be either under, you know, City of Cocoa or City of Melbourne water and they wouldn't be subject to this. But what we've done is, to give a little scenario of what 8% equates to, is under the sewer bill, as you can see, there's the second column, would show what the delta increase would be to a monthly bill for a sewer bill, to a typical sewer bill of 5,000 gallon consumption. And I, you know, there's depth beyond this graph, but this is really, this is really a graph to show that we have done the due diligence, that based on that recommendation, we can get to where we need to be. With the understanding the delta would be financed through debt service. So, none of the projects that we're talking about above our current capital program, the additional ones, those would be done through a debt service, not necessarily a self-funded And as you know, the utility services department has two utilities, what we call the countywide system and what we call Barefoot Bay. So, we've talked about, you know, as I shared about the fiscal year '29 projection, we are also looking at Barefoot Bay in terms of a $51 million increase. A big part of that is associated with us looking at the vulnerability of our utility as a whole, not just the Barefoot Bay, but as a whole under the jurisdiction. And I will tell you that Barefoot Bay has the highest vulnerability out there. I would like to say beaches, but we've made improvements, there's more to come. But Barefoot Bay historically has not been able to fund itself to where it needs to be. And as we proceed, our water plant is from 1963. Our wastewater plant was done in 2005, but what they invested in in 2005 was done economically due to the financing of, of the finance structure of Barefoot Bay. So, we're looking at doing this investment to get us to the point where we consider it a viable, reliable system. And again, we talk about the water and wastewater plant. We do it also in addition, not only for the reliability, but we see growth occurring in Barefoot Bay. And with the additional septic sewer coming on, we would also add some flexibility for future expansion if needed. And this, you know, this graph is basically saying at the current Barefoot Bay rates, again with the CPI, if we were to implement what we wanted to with the, you know, with the $51 million program, is again, in fiscal year '22, we would be broke even. And technically, we can't because there is a bond requirement that we're currently still paying off the debt of the purchase of Barefoot Bay, which is approximately, I think we're under $9 million still and we still have $8 million left. And with that, there's a bond covenant requirement for a reserve. So, it's really, there's not flexibility in the financials associated with it. And looking at Barefoot Bay as a standalone system, we provide the option of looking at a rate adjustment just for Barefoot Bay. Now, I will tell you, in Barefoot Bay, predominantly, most of the customers there are both water and sewer. So, when you look at the water and sewer bill cumulative, that is pretty reflective of most of the customers. And we're looking at a 14 and 1/2% increase and you can see how that changes from a monthly bill perspective. And again, as you can see, you know, the green arrow or the solid black line really shows you the flatness of how we collect further revenue on our existing rate structure and how the dotted line would really propel us to get to bridging the gap. Again, as we talk about all of the requirements or the investment needed, that would be all done through a debt service program. So, when we talk about rates, it's always interesting to see how do we compare with other utilities and in particular, utilities that are here within Brevard County. And what we've done is we've, we've given you a broad spectrum of utilities, some within the county, some without. And if you look at the bottom right corner, we've summarized those to kind of show you how we compare with our neighbors. And as you can see, and I, and right now, the, this is the sewer rate and this is really predominantly what we are as a utility. So, 95% of our customers as we, that are represented under the utility services are sewer-only customers because they're serviced through the City of Melbourne, City of Cocoa. The 5% that's not accounted for would be what MIMS would provide. But it really gives you an indicator of how we compare and how we're, right now, we're the lowest in Brevard County. And again, the only people that this would really fall under is, would be MIMS, there are true water and sewer customers. But again, you can see relative to other utilities, how we compare with that. So, based on, based on the growth, the 8% countywide, and this is a sewer rate comparison for the countywide, you can see that if, based on an 8% in fiscal year '22 and an 8% in '23, we would still be lower than what Palm Bay, Cocoa, and Titusville are today without them ever doing a rate increase. So, as we talk about, and we talked about the indexing associated, in 2013, when the board approved the rate increase that was presented to them, they also approved an index and in the index, they used the CPI index. And in experience and talking with our rate consultant and whatnot, the CPI is not a accurate assessment of an index associated with a water and sewer matrix. And so, we, the Bureau of Labor Statistics actually has a water and sewer matrix and it gives you an indicator of how the comparison of CPI to the matrix that we could, that we currently have. I know there's an approach that when rate indexes are, or when rates are approved, don't come back with more rate increase in the future. And, you know, putting the correct index to that helps that probability of needing So, we talked about, you know, this is really about the vulnerability perspective of Barefoot Bay and this is me actually, and this will be concluded at the last part when I ask for direction. But when we talk about Barefoot Bay, there is direction needed in order for us and how to proceed. Option one is what, you know, is currently what we're doing is status quo. We're, you know, don't, don't raise the rates, don't change the index, and don't talk about merging it into the county system. Option two would be to adopt the rates for Barefoot Bay independently, which would be the 14 and 1/2% model. And in addition to that, Barefoot Bay operates on their own rate resolution. And their rate resolution that's in Barefoot Bay, many of the costs are cheaper than what's in the countywide system. So, for example, a connection fee associated in the countywide system that would be $2,200 is $760 in Barefoot Bay. So, it would be go through those corrections in order to get those rates adjusted accordingly. And the third option would be to integrate Barefoot Bay into the, into the county system. The idea of this is of option three, and I'll jump into this in a slide, is, the idea is if we hold the Barefoot Bay rates where they are and if we identify that the Barefoot Bay rates are high, but that's, you know, that's to be determined on your direction, is to hold the Barefoot Bay rates and over the course of time, the county rates over three, four-year period will actually equal what the Barefoot Bay rates are. So, if in year one, we can integrate Barefoot Bay into the county system, hold the Barefoot Bay rates and adjust them up, it wouldn't be the 14 and 1/2% increase associated with Barefoot Bay customers and it would, you know, basically incorporate, incorporate the financials into the countywide system and give the department some financial flexibility on how to operate the utility as a whole. So, in conclusion, you know, we talked about the, I wanted to bring the point out about the CPI versus the water wastewater maintenance index and showing the comparison and with the hope that utilizing that will, you know, not be a need five, six, or 10 years down the road to do it because the index, we're hoping, is reflective. We're looking at, you know, achieving financial targets, you know, funding the projects that are not only, we're, it's not, these aren't projects that we're seeking to do. A lot of these projects are being mandated at a state-level requirement, whether in specific through the 403 or the expectation of septic to sewer or of minimizing discharge. I'm at the last slide.
Are you, oh, you're done?
Yeah, this is the, this is my concluding one, which basically, you know, we're seeking direction on how to approach the countywide rate, the Barefoot Bay rate. The idea of option three presented, which was discussion of merging Barefoot Bay into the county and also the, the direction of utilizing a different rate index in lieu of the CPI.
Okay, sir. Commissioner Loeb, and if you would, before you're done, address your thoughts on those things as well, that would be wonderful.
I'll do my best and jump in and remind me if I don't get to it, but I will do my best. I'm going to take this off again just so I can, I can speak a little more clearly without having to yell. So, a few things. First, as far as switching from CPI to the water and sewer index, the maintenance index, that just makes sense. I'll go ahead right now and I have a few more things to say, but I'll make that a motion across the board. Beyond that, looking at your options, I don't know if you can go back to the slide just for the benefit of the public. So, I'm going to tell you why I don't like option three and forgive me for a little sarcasm here and please bear with me. We basically had Barefoot Bay come to us and say, hey, hey, I just totaled my car. Do you want to buy it and pay the remaining payments on it? We said, oh, yeah, yeah, man, I'll buy that car. Sounds good. Can't drive it, but okay, I'll buy it. We're still paying for it, as you mentioned. We still have eight or nine million, you said?
Eight mil, eight plus.
At that point, I mean, it's, it's an obscene number for what we got. I mean, we should have been paid to take it over as opposed to pay to take it over, but we are where we are. So, now, now the folks that sold us a, you know, a salvage car are saying, hey, you want to buy us a new car? Not really. I can tell you, option three, there is, there's no way that I can meet my fiduciary duty to the D2 constituents and go for option three. I know that that, that may be unfortunate or is unfortunate for the Barefoot Bay folks, but we're in a situation that frankly, I don't know that the rest of the county can subsidize. As far as option one's concerned, I've got concerns with that as well. You know, I don't know if you heard the part earlier when I said there were a few things that I feared in life, including the facehuggers and the chestbursters from Alien. I also fear turds in the river. I fear that greatly. And my concern is, as you've suggested, that we need to do X, Y, and Z to get to a viable and reliable system. That would pretty clearly indicate we're not at a viable and reliable system. I get fully that anything can break. I can buy a, you know, a brand-new Toyota Corolla and it can break, but if I'm driving the one that was flooded, the chance that that's going to happen with 200,000 miles on the engine, it's a little higher. I don't want to wait until we have more issues with FDEP as far as consent judgments because I'm a cheapskate when it comes to that. I also don't want turds in the river because it negatively affects property values. I think it's horrible from an environmental standpoint. I don't need to go on and on about why that's an issue. I think something in option two is appropriate. As far as keeping the system separate, I really would not support anything that involved consolidating them. I just don't think I can do that and maintain the duty that I have to my constituents. As far as the, the rate changes, I would ask though, and what makes me uncomfortable is going about these somewhat drastic percentage-wise increases, for folks that have difficulty, I would like to have some mechanism in place where we're not going to shut their sewer or water if they're in arrears to some degree based on this increase in charges. It would continue to accrue and they would still owe it, but I don't want someone who's destitute, who's not working due to COVID, to have to be concerned that if they flush their toilet, it's not going to work, or that if they turn their faucet on, it's not going to turn on. You know, the folks that have the money that can do it, it's, it's the cost of not having our river turn into a, you know, a literal cesspool. You know, I, I feel strongly about it. Really, there's, there's nothing that's going to get me apart from option two. If someone wants to argue another, you're going to have to get another commissioner apart from me, but that's where I'm at.
And Commissioner, I have a, if I may, if I can ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
And that's where, and I know we're only doing this in discussion mode.
Yes, sir.
So, if we look on that, and I know what you said with related to, so the rate revenue for all option three shows a slight increase, a 1% to 2% increase up through 2025 in addition to what would be on the countywide system. If the rate increase were to be consistent instead of the 8.92, the 9.33, but to follow the recommendation of the countywide system and bring it into the, into Barefoot Bay, would that be a consideration, or bring that into the county, would that be a consideration?
Short answer is no.
Okay.
Just, just a thought on that, Commissioner Loeb, and I'm probably right there with you on those three. As far as the rate increases for the regular, you guys are going to have to tell me what you think. But I live in the city of Titusville. The average one here is 79.67. Titusville, it's $109. So, the county rates are incredibly lower than the municipalities. And I think for the things that we need to get done, and we haven't talked about the capacity issues, I think Commissioner Isneri has some capacity issues as well. I think we need to get some of this weight off so that they can start working on some capacity as well. So, I would, I would support this because I, it's just going to increase the water bill up to 79.67, which, which I think is still way under the rest. I think as we go on in years, we, it might be a discussion depending on how much money you have coming in, if, if we need to still consider that. But again, this is a user fee. People are using this. They should be paying for these things as well to keep you running effectively and efficiently. Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And there are two issues, as Eddie's mentioned quite clearly. Number one, Barefoot Bay and then the rate. So, I, first of all, I'd like to discuss Barefoot Bay. Barefoot Bay, as you guys know, falls exclusively within County Commission District III. I want to talk about something that unfortunately, I think we talk about far too much as a board is we sometimes have this feetdom mentality and think that, you know, well, I'm Commission District III. We really aren't. We're a placeholder and districts change. We're going to go, be going through the process very quickly. I, at one time, represented a district that I no longer lived in, in the state legislature. So, so things change. I think we're entrusted with all of Brevard County. The Indian River Lagoon doesn't uniquely impact three and not five or one. I think we need to look at the, at the broader picture. And yet, I say Barefoot Bay falls exclusively within my district. Let me tell you, no matter what happens here, I'm going to end up on the short end of the stick. So, I just want to lay out all of the data points that I have and throw it out and find out where, where you guys are on this one. Because no matter which way we go, I promise you, my phones will light up that I made the wrong decision, whether I hear it from the constituents in Barefoot Bay or whether I hear it from the constituents that don't live in Barefoot Bay. So, the first, the first issue is option, option number one. So the first, the first issue is option, option number one. If we're dealing with a clean lagoon, that, that system is at its failing point. I think Eddie said that we're going to have some major issues coming up and if we don't adjust the rates, bad things will happen. I don't think option two, Eddie, does, are we just putting a band, is option two just putting a Band-Aid on, on the situation?
Option two is looking at, no, we, we did the due diligence and option two is looking at Barefoot Bay as an independent entity and, you know, if.
You, you mentioned that, you mentioned it's been around since 19s.
Oh, Barefoot Bay, I mean, I don't know, John.
The facility?
Not to date you, but.
The term in 1963.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
It's been major modification one time.
Right.
Okay. So I don't know that it's a long-term, I don't know that it's a long-term solution, that, that this is something that a new facility would meet. Conversely, it's, it's, it's very difficult to take, to ask the average rate payer to pay 8% more and then take Barefoot Bay citizens and that 8%, they're paying so much more right now. If they were to drop it down to that lower rate, they would actually be saving money. The issue with this is if we have new capacity out there, new capacity means new growth and new growth in the south part of the county, my phones light up, as you can imagine. So what I'm saying is whether we increase the rates 14%, my phones light up, or whether we add them to the system and we increase capacity, my phones light up. So I, I'm, I'm not advocating on one side or the other. I would just like the holistic approach to this, what is going to be better, not for the people of Barefoot Bay, not for everyone outside of Barefoot Bay and County Commission District III, but the entire county. And I, I don't know how that, help me, help me, Eddie. I don't know how that, from my understanding, I could be confused, how that is not option three. Option three adds them into the county system.
There, I mean.
But keeps their rates at where they currently are.
Correct.
So which, even if you increases, they're so much higher than everyone else, right? If you increase everyone 8%, they are still leaps and bounds, 20 or 30 or $40 more than everyone else. I think what Eddie's.
It's like a three, four-year catch-up.
Yes, they would, they wouldn't, now, I don't know if there's a hybrid approach to any of these things, but I guarantee you, I'm still going to hear concerns that their rates are higher. What that would also do, from what you're telling me, is the hookup charges, if we did that, would then go to the countywide hookup charges. Is that correct?
We would, we would.
So in other words, and listen, I'm not saying $2,100 is an unfair amount, but from the perspective of the folks in Barefoot Bay, they would see it go from 700 to 2,100. I would argue that's a, that's, as a fair, that's, that's an issue of parity. So I would strongly support that. Remember, these are manufactured homes. These people with the homestead exemption generally pay quite a bit less in property tax, which I, you know, often have to explain to them to their dismay. My, my point to this thing is, I'm trying to look at this from a parity issue. I'm going to hear it from both sides. I want to hear what, what, what your thoughts are, but my underlying, my underlying principle on this is what's best for the Indian River, Indian River Lagoon when it comes to this water treatment facility because I don't went on either side. So at least I can say that's where I am.
And I'm sort of, Commissioner Loeb, as I understand, it probably makes your life a little easier to integrate them completely in our system, but we, we agreed to take it on. You know, we agreed to take on their train wreck and their, their broken car and I, but I don't, I don't like the idea that the rest of the county has to pay for it. But again, that's a decision that we made. It doesn't mean that we don't take care of a failing part of the county because, oh, well, you know, why should we, the rest of us have to pay for it? It would be the same in any neighborhood that we clean up or any road that we do. So, I mean, I'm okay either way and I wish Commissioner Tobias had a position because I would, you know, that's, that is his area. So I would be okay, I don't know, I'm sort of on the fence on this one because again, I don't, I don't think the rest of the county should suffer for it, but we are one county. So we need to take care of the entire system and I think it would make our job easier just to integrate them in. Should they pay a little more for the first few years if it's, if we can do it legally? Yeah, probably.
We can propose. I mean, again, the, the options presented are just a flavor and we can look at different dynamics if, but again, it's.
But maybe after a few years or after their system is at least at the, to the average of what the county is, maybe that's when we bring them equal to the county's rates. But they're already paying a lot of money now.
Yeah, and I don't know, John, in addition to a rate, I don't know if even doing like an additional like MSTU on top of it or something. I mean, I don't know if that's, but anyways, that's.
Okay, can I let, oh, well, sure. Go ahead, go ahead.
When, can I just, that was only the Barefoot Bay.
Sure, yes, Director, we're listening.
Can I speak? No, 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 no. When we get done with that, can I?
Oh, yes.
Reserve time for the rates after?
Yes.
Because I think we're stuck on Barefoot Bay right now.
You didn't go on the rest of them, did you?
Pardon?
You didn't take off on the rest of them, did you?
I, listen, I'm, I'm good either way. 14%, if we did a 14% increase, I wouldn't hear from the folks that their, their hookup charges would still be independent, so it would be the 700 as opposed to 21, 21 or 2200?
Yes, and Commissioner, one of the things I would propose is if you do do the 14.5 to allow, to allow this department to come back and also update the rate, the rate resolution for Barefoot Bay, because again, it's, the 760 that they're paying is really low. But there's your rates that we inherited back from early 2000. They've never been adjusted.
But they're on their, they're on an independent system, are they not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there, now, I don't, I don't expect them to pay more and not get the same level of service that they would otherwise be getting with a new county system and all that good nonsense.
Correct.
Then, then, then there's, then then we have a parity issue.
Yeah.
So the, you know, that, that I would have trouble doing. Put them on the system, increase the charges, increase the fees, that's great, but leaving them on the current system and then charging them as if they were on the other system, I just don't, is not fair uniquely to the, the hookup charges and all that good nonsense. They're either unique or they're all within the county. I think it's, I think it's one or the other. And I'm, I'm not arguing for one. I just think the, the hybrid of both is, is, they get the short end of the stick on both ends of this.
And Commissioner, if I may, you know, so, you know, connection fees are also referred to as impact fees and impact fees also fall under Florida law. And if we were to propose a new impact fee or connection fee, there is a due diligence calculation, again, what the rate consultants would help us with. It's not a arbitrary number that we could just use. That, that would be if we looked at Barefoot Bay independently. If we looked at Barefoot Bay merged into the county system, we've already looked at those numbers and in a, in a, in a sense, the, and forgive me on the number, I believe it's like 2,200 for sewer, which is a calculation in order for, the connection fees are used for capacity increase only. So it's, it's not about replacing the same line with the same line, it's about the extra capacity. So just to give you a comparison, the Riverside project, we upsized it by four inches. The diameter of the existing is, cannot be used by connection fees, but the four-inch increase can. So, so I'm just letting you know, we can do the, if, if the, if the, if it is the commission's direction, where Barefoot Bay be independent and we were to come back and talk about the modifications to the rate resolution, we would do a due diligence as part of that.
And just, just to be, Madam Chair, just to be clear, the viability of the, the system in Barefoot Bay, given the option two rate increase of, I think you have it 14.5%. The health of the Indian River Lagoon would be no worse if that was scrapped and they were on the larger system. Is that, is that fair?
We would use, I'm making sure I'm answering your question correctly, Commissioner. So you're saying if we weren't to do the 14.5% or do the 14.5?
Well, the, the difference between putting them on the system and, and leaving them, I mean, ultimately, this has to, there needs to be a new water treatment facility, correct?
Water and wastewater, correct.
Yes, there has to be at some point. I mean, that's, you know, that's not, that's what we're, you know, failing to discuss here at this point, whether or not we merge them onto that system prior or.
Correct.
Or, or not at all. I mean, that's, that's the larger one. And I think that gets into rate increases. Madam Chair, my two seconds on the rate increases, is that okay?
I, yes, I was going to ask, I was going to.
Okay, just to be very clear, I can't vote for the 8% and the reason I can't vote, I always think it's fair to say, not say I don't like rate increases. I think there has to be a reason as to why, because certainly there are additional costs that are mandates. But Commissioner Loeb and I, last meeting, had, lost on a two to three vote about redirecting sorrel monies that could be used for infrastructure, new wastewater plants. Again, the sorrel committee did their job as requested, but plans change and that money could have easily been redirected to that infrastructure to lower that potential increase and have the same amount. Now, it would most definitely be above the CPI of 1.234, absolutely. It also would be absolutely lower than the 8% that it currently is. I don't know where it is, but I don't think that it would be fair to vote for a rate increase and then, or sorry, vote against a rate increase and not give you a reason as to why. So it was the vote Commissioner Loeb and I took about redirecting the sorrel funds. If you want to go back and change that plan, I'd certainly be more willing to do that, but if not, that's why, that's why I can't support it at this point.
Where are you real quick on the rate index now?
Madam Chair, the 8%?
No, there was a rate index to where he wanted to not do CPI, but do what was recommended nationwide with the.
And what was that number?
WS Maintenance Index, three-point, go ahead, sir.
We can, this is just a snapshot, Commissioner, over the last three years. If it's the desire of the, the commission where they want to put a cap such as 3%, you know, we've worked with that with, you know, if, if a cap is the desire. I think the message I'm trying to make with this is that not utilizing an, an index more inclusive for a utility, there is, you know, $2.8 million shortfall. But if the, if you look in my previous slides, we show 3% and we're also, if that's the desire, where the commission wants to, if the water sewer maintenance index were to exceed above 3%, we would cap it at 3% if that's the direction to go in.
Madam Chair, can you, can you give me, give you the historical perspective of the water sewer ma, uh, uh, index? Where, where has it been over the last five years? Is it, do you have, I didn't see that one years.
Well, we only did the last three years, Commissioner.
And what has it been over the last three years? Because I have the CPI.
That's all right. If you look on the screen, it's right on the screen.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm old.
And the reason we only did the last three years is because the, in 2013, it was in fiscal year 18, which the, the indexing occurred, so we were using that as a snapshot.
Let me come back to you, Commissioner Tobias.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm just taking all this in. I think that it's extremely important that we upgrade these systems as necessary. I think it's imperative that the rate payers pay for it and not, all the taxpayers of the county have made that clear before also. You know, to do is what Commissioner Tobias suggesting is a bailout from my perspective and I'm not keen on that. So if we have to raise the rates, then we have to raise the rates because the rate payers own the system and no doubt they need to be. That's where I am.
Sir, you're, you're a yes on the countywide rate adjustment?
Yeah, option two sounds good to me.
Option two for you as well. How about the rate index, sir?
I'm still undecided on that.
Okay, we will come back to you as well. Commissioner Loeb, I've got yours, but Serge, I've been, I still got to get Commissioner Zonka's.
Okay, just, just a couple of quick thoughts. And I just, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with respect to options two versus three and what it, what it really means apart from what's pretty patently obvious on the paper there.
I think we have it. So I think, I think we have understanding, so I think if we just get the votes in to give them direction. I, I understand, you guys.
There is a little, there is a little disconnect. I've gotten the impression because it, it seemed that there was at least a suggestion that going option two might be untenable or might somehow be harmful to the lagoon. At least that's what I was starting to, to perceive.
I don't think he was saying that.
I just asked the question and, and I think we got an answer that no, it would not be.
Okay, as, as long as we're all clear on that. I just didn't want that to be a disincentive for folks to go a certain way if they thought.
I wasn't advocating one or the other. I just wanted to know before I made that decision. And Madam Chair, I would be okay, the last ones, I'm looking, thank you for pointing out, were 3.4, 3.2, and 3.1. I'd be okay with that and with a cap and I would do it at the, the 3.4. I mean, that's the highest it's.
Okay.
Well, there is a standing motion still as far as moving from the CPI to the water and sewer index.
Yes, sir, I didn't have a second on that yet. So I thought this discussion was, was very good. Ms. Zonka?
I think I understood clearly, but since there was a lot of Barefoot Bay discussion, discussing exactly the scenario, and I, like I said, I think I understand it fine, but I just want to make sure everybody does, the exact scenario, if we integrate Barefoot Bay into our system, what would be ideal for not just our system, but for maintenance, for management, for, because obviously, like Commissioner Tobias said, the system is broken. I mean, it's, it's antiquated, it's, it's risky, it's, how do we do this smoothly and fairly as possible and at least make it easy for you to make plans for future capacity, et cetera?
No, and I appreciate that question, Commissioner. So, so, you know, the, not only is it a financial, or I'm sorry, the flexibility financially, but it's also provides us by merging us into the county, it also provides us a flexibility operationally. Right now, our staffing for, you know, we talk about the CIP and the operations and maintenance of Barefoot Bay, but we are technically, if we bring staff from our countywide system into Barefoot Bay, they have to be charged to the Barefoot Bay accounting system because they're providing a service in Barefoot Bay. So it's almost like the equivalent, if the county were to go into another municipality that had their own jurisdiction, we would backcharge them.
And Barefoot Bay is already paying more than what we're paying right now.
Yes.
In the, I mean, within the county.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not saying, but it's, it's hard to blame the Barefoot Bay residents and yeah, I mean, it is an older population, you know, it's probably a lower income as well because of the, the type of area it is. But that's my concern is that, you know, I don't want to hit them all at once, but at the same time, I want to make sure that rates will be increased so we can maintain and keep up with our growth and, and that, that's the maintenance rate of 3%. That's assuming your system, I'm sure, is, is at least at the average acceptable level. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm sure there's a baseline that we're not meeting, but this is what's being published.
And that would be my question. I mean, is, are we meeting the average, I mean, as far as, as not just capacity, but proper maintenance?
I, and Commissioner, this is why we're doing a very aggressive approach on doing the assessments of every component of our, of our assets, because again, that's part of the calculation and there's a bit of a guesstimate because as we go through and assess, I will tell you, like, for example, there's areas in Indian Atlantic that we thought would have horrible gravity system, but upon assessment, they were actually in good condition. We're finding some, you know, we're finding some things in Barefoot Bay that are exceeding in a not-good way what we're seeing in our assessment. So we're using this as a, you know, the, the index and the 14% a lot of those are being, you know, outside of the water wastewater plant, which is definitely in need. We've, we have put a pool of money aside in order to address the existing infrastructure and whatnot and we're hopeful that that would be sufficient and we're, we're confident, but we're still going through that process.
Commissioner Zahn, can I find out where you are on the county rate adjustment?
I mean, I'd be, obviously, we need to increase it. I guess the discussion comes between, you know, where are we between the 3% and what the utility's asking for?
Okay.
I mean, because I would be okay with a slightly higher than that. I don't know that I'd be quite at that high number that you brought back, but I have also sort of changed my mind a little bit, learning a little bit more about the Barefoot Bay system and what that means, you know, as far as integrating them into our system versus not. I would rather see them integrated, I think, based on the information you provided today.
Okay, I, I have three option twos and an option three and Commissioner Tobias, I'm not sure if you know where you want to be yet, which is going to carry a lot of weight with me, sir.
Again, I don't win either side of this one. So Commissioner Loeb mentioned the, the wreck cars, the wreck car scenario. Tell me how people from Barefoot Bay would be getting a bailout if. a bailout if they were, if they were to go on the larger system and the county system and pay their current, pay their current rate, right, and, and not have an increase until the county rate met the Barefoot Bay. Would, would they, tell me how they, I'm trying to understand, they would be paying more than the, the county, would it not make up for that $9 million bond or that $8 million bond that's, would that delta not make up for that $8 million bond?
I don't.
Corrector?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is there a number, is there a number that, that, that we could increase that would make up for that $9 million bond so they weren't getting a bailout? Or is that so untenable, it's?
If I, if I can just mention a few things.
Sure.
Because there was a lot of discussion about.
And I'm sorry, who are you?
My name is Terry Bovery, I'm with Reftalis, Senior Manager, and was Principal in, doing the analysis for, that's being presented today.
He's our consultant, working through the rate.
Thank you.
And, and I think that there was a lot of discussion about, you know, kind of what's the, the benefits and the drawbacks maybe between some of the different options, and the discussion right now is centered on option three and integration with Barefoot Bay. And one of the things to keep in mind is when you do an integration like that, is there is a benefit, because it's, it's sort of like a regionalization, there's a benefit to everyone for doing that. One of that benefit is that everybody's kind of paying the same revenue into the same bucket.
Yeah, I, I think that, yeah, Eddie explained that very well. My, my question is, is, I don't, I, I understand where Commissioner Lober is coming from, and I agree, I don't want them to benefit from the situation.
That's what I was trying to say.
How much would, the question is, is even taking that synergy into account, right? You're the consultant, how much would we have to raise rates so they weren't, so we could fully cover the $9 million bond that was remaining on the old?
Well, if you, if, so, right now, I'm going to speak in rough numbers, Barefoot Bay generates about, you know, a little over $4 million a year in revenue. If we take them to the county's existing rates, they'll be generating a little bit over $3 million in revenue. And when you think about it from the perspective of the bill impacts that were presented earlier, you know, they were around $100, and the rest of the system's around like 70 or so, roughly speaking, so you can see those percentages in relationship kind of makes sense. You would be able to cover, you know, your debt service and your operating expenses, but you wouldn't be able to cover all of the things that were identified to be funded in the Barefoot Bay system, including the improvements that were indicated to be necessary for the benefit of, you know, the environment associated with the improvements to the water and the sewer systems. So, you know, what you would have to do is probably keep them at their rates where they're at now, and then if you were to integrate them, I think, as what was presented in option three, and raise their rates, you know, either at the same rate, or keep them flat and let the county's rates approach, you know, to the bill over time.
Yeah, but isn't that option three as the state's?
Yes, it'll approach it over time, but another one could be that you could just, you could still integrate them and get the benefit of, you know, the integration of the two systems.
Commissioner. Yeah, I think the question becomes, is, are, are people getting an advantage in Barefoot Bay with option three? Are they getting, Commissioner Lober said that they were, it was a bailout, and I'm not, I'm not arguing, but is there a number that we could increase what they have right now and still, to offset that, whether, whether the difference between that $9 million bond and what the county would be saving by integrating them in the system is?
We would have to go through that analysis, sir.
Commissioner Lober, Madam Chair, Commissioner Lober, if we could solve the, that they would be getting a unique, unique benefit, would you have any issue with them joining the system?
Here's the thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, with a caveat, and the caveat is, Mike, you're addressing half of the coin here. You're addressing the half that, that you've mentioned with respect to the bond. That's a big part, but knowing that their system, or my understanding is that their system is in a far more tumultuous, far more deteriorated state than the rest of the county, there's a delta even to get them to where the rest of the county is, knowing that the rest of the county is, I hate to say it, not where we need to be either. So, what I would, what I would want to see before I integrated them into the county system, and I'm not saying no to it, but there's some conditions we've got to address first. One, what you've mentioned, and the second is to get them to a point where they essentially match the rest of the county on a either per capita or per area cost level. So it's not that we're spending four times as much in Barefoot Bay to buy them a new, new sewer plant, even if we wipe out the, the bond that we're paying on the old one. But yes, if we could, if we could wipe it so that essentially it's all, it's all on a level playing field on the front end, sure, integrate them.
And Commissioner, if I may, and I know, I hope I'm part of the discussion, so as we talked about the Barefoot Bay system, when we talk about the 51 million, and I know a lot of, a lot of entities associate the State Revolving Fund as being the source. So the State Revolving Fund is capped at 20 million a year.
Isn't it per project, though?
It's per project, it is per project, and there is no guarantee that you will get the 420 million, because the way State Revolving Fund works, it's an allocation that comes from the feds to the states, and then it's a function of the demand, and, you know, obviously, the State Revolving Fund tries to give as much as they can across the board. But, you know, just to talk about a local example, the city of Palm Bay just did an award, or I hope, I think it's an award, for a new wastewater plant at 26 million. State Revolving Fund, they submitted the, the application for State Revolving Fund, of which State Revolving Fund said you can only get 20, and in order for them to award it, they had to do a short-term loan for 6 million. When we talk about the benefit of merging Barefoot Bay into the county system, it also includes the rate, the bond rate benefit. So if we have to go and do a loan of some sort, right now, the, the financials of Barefoot Bay would not be favorable in a low-interest rate loan of any sort because of that. By bringing them into the county, again, it gives us that flexibility to utilize if we decide to.
I think, Commissioner Tobias, I'm not sure where you are, I think I'm starting to go more towards option three. And, and let me tell you my thought on this, because I don't think there can be growth right now because there isn't capacity. So, I, I think if we do this and then, I, because we're going to have to, we're going to have to do something to fix it down there, you're going to have to do something for wastewater, but that will be county revenues as well coming in down the road. But I don't really, I can't visualize in my head the, the financial abilities with that. So I'm thinking maybe, you're going to have to tell me, can we come back and discuss this later when we have time to, to get a little bit more of the numbers on this, before we just say option two or option three? But sir?
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm okay, I, I'm sensitive to what Commissioner Lober said.
I agree.
I don't, I don't want the people in Barefoot Bay to be getting a selected advantage because of the terrible system that they currently have in place.
Yeah.
Through no fault of their own, it's probably a fault of the county for accepting it. However, that's long in the past. What holds that, what holds the rest of the, the ratepayers neutral, whatever that fee is, if you can bring it back and say, instead of having to increase it $14, maybe we increase it $16, and then everyone else gets that, whatever, that new CPI, that new index until they meet that number, I mean, you just need to give us a number, and if it's somewhat reasonable, and, because I'm not comfortable in giving a unique advantage to some, some folks at the expense of the rest of the county. I just don't think that that, as, as a ratepayer, I don't think that that's very fair. So if you can get us that, it sounds like we're all on the, we're all on the same place, as long as they don't get a unique advantage.
So maybe you can bring something back to us, Senator, or we can just spend some time with you, because I'm thinking too, if, let's say it's this X amount here, but if we do this and we end up with us making more money here and being able to fix that capacity issue, for the, for the long term, it might be good. But I don't have the numbers, so I can't, I can't see it right now, I don't know potential growth.
And again, we have the benefit of the rate consultant to go through that due diligence, and.
Okay, so I, good, good talk, good questions, guys. So I think if, if you guys would come back with that, it would, it would help me a little bit more in decisions. But Commissioner Tobias, you, you are going to have a little bit more heavy weight with me than the rest of commissioners, because you're, you're living down there in that area. Commissioner Lober?
Just a question, and I truly don't know the answer to this, I don't. Is it, is there anything that's unlawful or prohibited with us potentially, if the concern is getting funding to do it, needs to be done, and the thought that you just can't get reasonable terms pledging revenue from another source, for instance, from the county as a whole?
You can loan it. There's, there's a process that I'm not familiar with, and I think Elizabeth.
Because my thought is if.
There's a loan process where, and it would have to be something that would go in front of the, the board in order to do so, but you can.
Because I, I don't want the lagoon to get polluted because there simply isn't enough money. I'm not, that to me is not an acceptable alternative, but if, if we can pledge the rate, you know, the ratepayers' payments for our whole system for the purpose of fixing that section of the county, knowing that that's not what's going to be used to pay for it, that it is going to come from that section of the county, but we're simply doing that to secure more favorable terms, I'd be okay with that.
You mean, taking a loan from another department to do this?
Right, I mean, as long as we know that we're setting the rates, it's something that can service the debt. If it gets them a, a lower percentage cost to either enable something to be done or to get it done for a lesser amount, okay.
Again, I'm not, I'm just talking on the cuff on this, Commissioner, but if, by doing that, that would increase the debt service for the countywide system. So there's an offset with that?
Maybe we should talk outside of this.
Sure.
I just, I'm sorry, I kind of ambushed you with this one.
No, no, it's okay.
I don't like telling that to people. But I, yeah, well, we'll talk.
Unless Frank's got 9 million just sitting around somewhere we don't know about right now, can borrow, got his attention on that. Okay, so we have, you have an agreement with raising the rate adjustment. I think some of the commissioners want to have a little bit more discussion on, on the rate later. The Barefoot Bay, I think you're going to come back to us with those, and I think you have a consensus on the rate index. I'm comfortable as well, Commissioner Tobias, with a 3.4% cap. Are you guys?
Madam Chair, could I, could I suggest just to allow a little more flexibility that we cap it at 6.8 over any two-year period? Because the problem is, if we have, let's say, a year that's higher than 3.4, the maintenance costs aren't going down, and I, I hate to set us up knowing that we're capping it in a way that may more significantly impact us in, in having a deficit between what the actual maintenance costs are and really what they end up being permitted.
Well, that's a good point, because you'll never catch up if you, if you have a down year.
That's, that's why I'm thinking.
I would agree to that if it, if it, if it, if we stipulated that if it ever goes over the 3.4, that the commission would at least know about it for conversation.
That's fine. So I'll modify my existing motion to switch from CPI for these purposes countywide to the Water and Sewer Maintenance Index capped at a maximum increase of 6.8% over any two-year period, but if any year is going to exceed 3.4, that it be brought back as an agenda item at the, the next available commission meeting. Chair?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Did you get lost there? He said that he's going to make a motion to do the new index. If index ever is over 3.4%, it would have to come back to the commission.
But that it would be, it would be, yeah, at least for informational, and if we want to take action at that point, or whoever our, our successor's successors are, they can take action to address it. But by default, the motion would allow for up to a 6.8% increase in a year. Granted, the likelihood that's going to happen, I think, is pretty trivial, but as, as Commissioner Smith was remarking, we're never going to catch up if we set a, a cap that's too low. And the problem is, those costs are going to continue to, to add up, and we're going to have to get it somewhere.
Yeah, I, so you've just taken it, if it's, if the, and I don't, we don't know, we have three, we have three data points, right? 3.4, 3.1, and 3.2, whatever the three there. I don't know that it's ever been zero, but I'm not comfortable if it goes from zero to, to, to six. I'm just, I don't know that there.
Yeah, maybe it would only be a 10s.
I'm, I'm comfortable at 3.4, or I even said 3.5, but I'm not comfortable at, at, at six, I'm not comfortable at 6.8 over two years. It becomes complicated and potentially have us.
Commissioner Zonka, I think you're going to be the heavyweight in this, so what are you thinking, ma'am?
Oh, I don't know about that, but without making you go into like a full-on presentation again, what is, what is lost by not giving the rate increase that was recommended by the consultant? Like, as far as capacity, as far as maintenance, because I know 3.2 or 3.4% is not going to get us a safe system, and that's my concern. And believe me, I'm not excited about any of this. I, I would have liked to have seen different things happen up to this point, but.
I mean, the way I look at it, Commissioner, and if you look at that slide, and if you use that comparison, it's one of those things where basically, and I'm rounding, over three years, there was a $3 million shortage of revenue that could have been collected. Over six year, over six years, it would have been 6 million. So it's.
But I'm talking about what, what we're asking for. What, what is being lost by a 3.4, even a 6% increase?
What that percentage would be?
From what the consultant is suggesting. What are we losing? Like, put it in real items. Like, what aren't we going to do?
Less assessments, less staffing, less CIPs, basically.
That's capital improvement, that means expansion of, of the system?
Capital, repairing existing assets. It's that much less we can perform.
It's not just expansion, it's also maintenance.
And that's, that's exactly what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because that's my concern, because, again, we keep hearing how we have the system that's so antiquated, and we have pipes that should never have been put in the way they were, and.
So we, so we, we function on a balanced budget, and we do, and we maximize to what's budgeted. The larger the budget we have in this case, the 3 million, is 3 million more we could have been doing assessment in one fiscal year in lieu of spreading it out over three years. So it gives us the ability to be more aggressive or proactive to find these shortages in our system and get them addressed sooner rather than later.
I think, looking at this, and I just turned another thought, I think if we would have done this all along, we wouldn't have to be looking at a higher percentage rate increase right now. We'd be a little more competitive with the other municipalities. So I'm going to change my mind. Commissioner Lober, if you want to make a motion just to go with the Water and Sewer Maintenance Index, I, I would vote for that, but I don't know if you've got another vote.
If you do, I'll, I'll go back to the original motion and make it just the Water and Sewer Index. Again, it's, it's not that I want anyone to pay a penny more, it's just that we're going to have to come up with it at the end of the day.
It's been pretty.
And if we don't, we're going to be back in the same position that we are.
Well, it's, it's realistic versus unrealistic. That's from my perspective.
I'll go ahead and modify the motion back to the way it was originally stated.
Have a motion?
The CPI countywide to the Water and Sewer Maintenance Index without a specific cap. I would ask, as part of the motion as well, though, if it, if it does exceed 3.4, I'd like just informationally.
Okay, information.
To be brought back, not for any action necessarily to be taken, but it be brought back or staffed, and I might bring it back at the next available commission meeting for discussion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 5-0.
Okay, and then I'll be coming back again to discuss option two and three and.
Yes, sir.
With a little more fantastic.
And then we'll be a little bit perkier again.
No, no, I'm sorry. I, I drew the sword straw on being last on the agenda.
Mr. Zonka's looking a little hungry to the right of me, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we are at public comments now. I have one. Mr. Michael Bramson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good, I don't know what it is, afternoon, evening. Thank you for your time. I come up here real quick, I don't need a clock, I'm going to speak something outside of what I normally do, just to be real quick about thanking everybody what they said today, the information that you gave, the, basically, the acknowledgement of what's going on in the Brevard County across the board has been fantastic. One thing that we think we kind of forget, especially on my side of the table, is I'd like to thank everybody else, I'd like to talk about the people, I like NASCAR here, Chief Scholmar, Chief Jurgensen, Chief Klein, the staff, county manager, public employee director, and those type of people that all work that I don't even know. I have not even met half of them, Jill, those, that kind of group of people that we don't really talk, they sit on the other side of negotiations. There's a lot of hours, a lot of work, a lot of stuff went into the presentation you heard on, on behalf of fire rescue. And I think that magnitude of what needs to happen and what has happened over the past couple of years isn't reflected in the presentations that you hear over a short period of time when I have a clock. So I just wanted to acknowledge that the, the union, the firefighters' union, the firefighters, recognize that across the board with, with all the commissioners across the board and your staff. And I just want to thank everybody for what they've done, and we still got a long road ahead of us, but at least we're moving in the right directions. And the comments that were made today, I could tell you, in the field, have changed the way the fire department will move forward from this day forward. And, and that's a first changing the direction of the ship I've seen in many, many years. So once again, I'd like to thank everybody and the Brevard County staff for the amount of energy and the product they produce today. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Very nice of you. I want to move into board reports. Mr. Abate?
I think we have a, no report.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Commissioner Lober?
Can you pass somebody for just a moment?
I've got 30 seconds. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to ask the question of the rest of the board on two issues that I generally bring up, but these, I'm not asking for a motion, and I know this is the county manager's budget, but as much, as many parameters as we probably can give him to work within, I think that's what he was asking on the fire assessment. assessment. So my questions would be to find out where the rest of the board is on whether or not we ask him to craft a budget that would require us to declare, A, a tax increase, or B, to bust the charter cap. If, if, if we, if we let him, it's, no, it's, we'll, we'll accept either or look at either, or, you know, I, of course, would prefer to set the parameters that, that we don't do that. And I understand there are a lot of variables out there. The constitutional offices haven't yet put in their proposals, but I think if we give direction that we don't want to have to advertise a tax increase or a charter cap busting, I think that gives staff a little bit more sway with the constitutional officers when they bring in their budget. So I, just for discussion, I know I asked for a formal motion last time, and I don't think I got it, but we came in with a, a great budget either way. I think it's worth at least mentioning, though, seeing this is a budget workshop, Madam Chair.
Okay, sir, did you want people to discuss?
Yeah, to see, you know, if you want to speak about it, whether you want to speak privately with, with, you know...
I, I would hope, County Manager, that you would do your best to come in with a budget where we're not declaring a tax increase or, or those things either. I think that I'm, I'm looking for you to try to bring that in. I know there's some optional funding available, so I, I would like for you maybe to keep us abreast of whether you think that's going to have to be something that we would have to do or not have to do with that, so we can make a decision on that at the next meeting as we're talking about the assessment with these different options. So I would like to know that as well. My thoughts, guys?
Yeah, I would just say, I would prefer not to advertise for a tax increase, especially if we're looking at seriously increasing that fire assessment and utility rates. I think asking them to pay higher property taxes, too, is probably not, I mean, higher than we should, you know? Busting the cap, it would probably not be something I would support.
I say what you say.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll kind of merge this with my, my board report as well, just to kind of keep a, a little bit of a flow here.
Hold on just a second. Were you done?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, you're on.
Okay, we'll do that, in fact. All right. I would just ask Frank to endeavor and make every reasonable effort not to exceed the charter cap with respect to advertising a tax increase, any action that would cause us to have to do that. I would say strongly endeavor and use perhaps more than every reasonable effort to draft a budget that doesn't cause us to have to do that. If there is something truly extenuating, I'll sit down with you, but I'll, I'll tell you, I, I don't know from the conversations I've had that we need to do either of those things, and I would very much prefer not to. So unless it's absolutely unavoidable in order to maintain what we've discussed as priorities here, I, I just don't want to see a budget that comes back that way. A couple of things I, I just want to mention real briefly, and I'll have some items coming up, probably at the next commission meeting, if not at the, the following, at the absolute latest. There've been some interesting, a couple horrible, and, and one great bill that have originated in Tallahassee. I'll give you guys the numbers and all that fun stuff later. I just kind of want to give you the, the real quick nuts and bolts in terms of what it means to us. Obviously, on the good side, I'll start with the good and then move to the depressing. I'm supposed to end on a good note, so maybe that's not the way to do it. I'll do it anyway. So legal ads. I, I'm getting more feedback that there is actually a chance now that this will get through. It's gotten through one of the two chambers, it's now at the other chamber. And from what I hear from people that are smarter and better connected than I am, there's a 50% chance it's going to get through. That may not sound great, but compared to where it's been previously, that's a pretty darn good number. I'll take it. On the bad side, there are a couple of bills that are floating. There is one that deals with regional planning councils, and that the bottom line is, with respect to that, we will lose federal funding if we lose the regional planning councils. And I, I think, without trying to be pejorative to the individual that put the bill up, that there is some history that deals with DRIs and the regional planning council's history dealing with the DRI process. Frankly, we don't do that anymore. The RPC is the, I think there are 11 in the state. They simply don't do that. So I, I think it's, it's retribution or retaliation to a degree based upon, if you want to call it a sin, I don't know whether it was or not because I wasn't around for it, of folks who have nothing to do with the planning councils any longer. So it's, it's essentially punishing locals for something that took place that no longer takes place, that we had nothing to do with. Lastly, there's another item that was brought to my attention earlier, earlier this morning by a colleague of mine that is being backed, unfortunately, by the Attorney General's office that would allow them to intervene, and I'm sure Eden and Abby Yav, seeing a nod over there, have seen this, would allow them essentially to intervene in cases that we are involved with, civil cases, and essentially render our services, or the services of the county attorney's office, far devalued. We could get us up potentially, from what I've seen so far, to the point of a settlement, they could jump in, us having done the legwork and say, thank you, and now the settlement funds are going to become state dollars.
You're talking about the opioid situation, correct?
I'll, I'll let Eden, if she wants to jump in more, yes is the short answer, but I'll, I'll let her jump in to address it. That's where it would impact us most directly. But, you know, certainly, it's, it's a concern. I can tell you, on the, the regional planning council end, I have been asked to, to bring forth a resolution. I can tell you, there are a slew of other local governments and entities that are pushing them through or have pushed them through. Recently, Space Coast TPO pushed one through. Volusia, I was just speaking with one of their commissioners, they pushed one through. I can tell you, there are a lot of cities that have or are doing that. So I'll ask for support pushing something similar through. And then as far as the, the legal ad, you know, I can just tell you individually, I, I don't know that we need to have a, a collective resolution. I'll, I'll talk to staff later and, and see, you know, if they think it's going to make a difference. I'll talk to a couple of the folks that lobby up in Tally to see if they think it'll make a difference. But I've individually sent messages to all of our state reps and also to the state senators just to keep them in the loop, even though it's, it's a, a House issue at this point, encouraging them to support it. I'll just say this, the last thing on this. The arguments as far as, from the other side, from the newspaper lobby are specious at best in the sense that they're talking about how many people read newspapers. That's wonderful, you know, it's great that there are a certain number of people that read newspapers, but the bottom line is if none of them get to the legal ads, it's irrelevant how many people read the headlines and how many people read page A1, A2, and A3. I can tell you from, I'm sure you all recollect this, the couple times that I've polled the audience when we've not been in the Florida room to say, hey, is anyone here that wouldn't have been here but for a legal ad? Not a soul. So, yeah, there are still people that read newspapers. You know, they, they may have a value in that sense, but those folks don't learn about issues that are, that are required to be noticed at our expense, which means taxpayer expense, and do anything, either express support or express disapproval. They don't do anything as a result of reading them, which suggests they don't read them. So I would just, you know, say, please keep a lookout on that. I'll put that on the agenda coming up here, and, you know, we'll, we'll see how things go. But I, you know, certainly we'll have two of the three, if not three of the three, put on there. Thank you all.
Commissioner Smith?
No report.
Commissioner Vice Chair Zonka.
Yes. First off, I want to thank Commissioner Pritchett for taking the bull by the horns with the Tyco disaster, and I'm happy to say that there'll be a change in management coming about shortly. And I was going to speak with our county manager after this, but I figure it's probably better to bring to the board, only so we can give you some direction. You know, as they go through this transition and try to find somebody, you know how it can kind of take a while, and if things are as messy as I think they are, do you think if, and I have not, honestly, I've not even talked to him, that we could ask Steve Barowski to possibly give them a hand at least for a month, until they get somebody in there to sort of sort out their finances and some of their stuff? Would that, would that be an issue? Because I know, I believe he's brought somebody else in at the Valkyria Airport that could probably, you know, and I, I know he probably wouldn't keep things, you know, ignored in Valkyria, but I trust Steve. And, again, I, I've not even asked him, so he may say, are you crazy lady? You know, I don't know. But, but I think it's somebody at least that's already demonstrated that he can do a really good job. And I, and I want to make sure that we've got somebody that, if, if, if the board on Tyco's willing to even ask. I just, I just thought of, you know, it might be a good idea to at least get an expert in there to kind of help them transition as they look for a new manager.
Yeah.
I mean, but I, again, I could have...
I have talked to Steve, and he said he would be willing to do that.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, then you know more than me.